Sorry. I called the meeting to order. Roll call?
Ms. Matoye.
Here.
Ms. Flur.
Here.
Ms. Black.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Ms. Bartow.
Here.
Ms. Anderson. Ms. Snell.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay. We are going to recess to close session. Good evening. I'd like to call this portion of our meeting together. Before we get started, in closed session, the board took action to release and non-reelect one temporary certificated employee pursuant to Education Code Section 44954 effective at the end of the 2018-2019 school year and directed the superintendent to send out appropriate legal notices or designate. The roll call vote was as follows: seven ayes, zero noes, zero absent. Alrighty, at this time, oh my gosh, we have to do it ourselves. We will have our opening ceremonies, a moment of reflection, and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Mrs. Yelsey.
Telephone.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, did you want to... Um, this is adoption of the agenda time?
Madam President?
Yes?
We would like to pull item 13A. Our presenter was not able to make it tonight.
Thank you.
Move adoption of the agenda as amended.
Second?
It was moved by Mrs. Flur and seconded by Mrs. Black. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Adoption of the minutes for May 28, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. It was moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Seven oh. Okay, this goes to Dr. Navarro, our next item.
Okay. Well, this is one of my favorite events of the year because we get to recognize our students, not so much for what they've accomplished, but what the kind of human being they are. You know, it's about their character. It's about their essence of being. So I would like to ask, uh, let's see, Mrs. Franco? Want to come on up, please? Thank you. She'll introduce our principals who will speak about each of our Character Trade awardees.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Annette Franco, Public Relations Officer for our district. I am here representing Dr. Navarro. And as you know, every year, we like to celebrate students for just being good kids, not any specific accomplishment, just being good people, which we need more of in this world. So first, I'd like to ask Principal of Back Bay High School to please come on up, Mr. Michael Wagner.
Thank you. Dr. Navarro, President Matoye, Vice President Ms. Flur, members of the board, and members of cabinet. It is with great pleasure that I stand up here today to talk to you about a student of ours named Alexander Johnson. Unfortunately, Alexander could not be here tonight. Super sad, but...
Oh, he's here. But wait. What?
I'm so sorry. I didn't know he was gonna make it after all. He's done with all his push-ups. So Alexander Johnson came to us this year, and we knew nothing about him. He was a senior. As with most students, he needed some academic support that he got from our school. And he is now graduating, as well as he's gonna be joining the United States Marine Corps in...
In ten days.
He leaves for boot camp on the 24th.
Whoa.
They're not giving him any time to change his mind.
Fourteen days, two weeks.
So since day one on our campus, Alexander has been an extremely liked student by peers, as well as staff. He's super respectful. He uses his manners when he speaks with staff members. He addresses them correctly with Mr. and Mrs. Even when some students are able to have a relationship with a staff member, they might call them by, say, a lot of students call me Wagner. He doesn't call me Wagner. He calls me Mr. Wagner. And it's fine either way, but it just goes on to show like the level of respect that he carries with him every day at school. And I think throughout just his life and working with his teachers this year, he's overcome those academic needs, and he's on track to graduate in seven more days. And so when I spoke with some of the staff members at Back Bay, they talked about how when he asks questions, it's always from a level of respect. He gives other students respect. He has been working out with our head custodian, who is a former Marine. And so every day, they get out, they set up cones. He runs them, they do push-ups, they do drills, and I think that he's given them a little bit of a taste of what he's gonna expect in the Marines. Kind of setting them ahead of the curve, I hope, a little bit, right? So it is great pleasure that we have Alex here tonight. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were here. I totally wasn't gonna be able to make it. And so when I started, that's why I was saying that. But if I can say that there's any student that's been on our campus this year that has just been a standout, it's been Alex. He's well-liked by everybody, I promise you. Alex?
Photo ops. He's getting a footage.
And now to present the Character Trade Award for Citizenship, I'd like to ask Principal Michael Holt from Estancia High School.
Okay, we know her. Who's bigger than you? The banner's bigger than you are, see?
Good evening, Dr. Navarro and trustees. You're right, I believe it's about everybody present on the dais recognizes Jennifer Neri. In addition to being Estancia's school board representative, Jennifer Neri is somebody who models good citizenship on our campus every day. She does this through her polite smile and friendly interactions with students and staff members. In addition to being your school board representative from Estancia, she's also the senior class president for ASB, and she's the founder of ARC, or the Acts of Random Kindness. And through this club that she's created with nearly 60 members, they try every month to make sure that there's a large-scale positive impact on our campus, whether it's doing simple things such as making sure that every student's locker has an individualized note on it, encouraging them to have a good day, to make a positive difference, or doing other little things such as decorating teachers' classrooms, or leaving small gifts on classified staff's workspaces. Jennifer has really helped lead our school in a positive and impactful way by being a great citizen and modeling those values and virtues that we hold most dear on a daily basis. Jennifer's smile, her kindness, and her great enthusiasm will greatly be missed after she graduates. In just a few days, she'll be graduating from Estancia, and then heading up to the Bay Area where she'll be attending Cal Berkeley and starting earlier on a Fall Bridge program. She's been a great student and a wonderful role model, and we'll miss her greatly.
And now to present the Character Trade Award for Fairness, I'd like to ask Principal Sean Bolton from Newport Harbor High School.
President Matoye, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, and distinguished guests, we would like to, for fairness, Zarich Be So So, please come up here, Zarich. Zarich is absolutely incredible, and she's going to be dearly missed on our campus. This is a yearbook that is going to be dedicated towards the school Board of Education tonight. Zarich was the photo editor, the main photo editor for our yearbook this year. And one of the big initiatives and one of the big pushes on campus was to fairly represent all students on campus and all subgroups on campus. And Zarich, through her work, we've gone through a lot of calamities at Newport Harbor High School in the last three years, but she's been totally involved, she's been positive, she's been fierce, and she's been loyal to the school through and through. Through her work with Latinos Unidos, which is the club on campus promoting Latinos on campus and their place on campus and in society, we, for the first time, have a Latina on the cover of our yearbook. It's also a bilingual book. And I think the most touching aspect of the book being bilingual is we have a lot of parents now that can read our yearbook. In the past, it wasn't the case, but we already have had some yearbooks go home, and there were tears of joy because some parents who could not read English, read Spanish, could now read the book. And Zarich played an enormous role in all of that. Also, she's been involved in a lot of different aspects of school. She's a top student. She's headed up to Cal State San Francisco to study criminal justice. She wants to go into law enforcement. She's all about fairness, inclusion, and what's right. I see her because of her intelligence, her fierceness, and her loyalty. She's gonna be in a think tank in the CIA one day. That's just what I think. But Zarich, you have taught us more than we've taught you at Newport Harbor High School, and we're gonna dearly miss you. And you're leaving an enduring legacy that's gonna last for generations. So congratulations and thank you for all you've given us.
We'll take turns.
And now to present the Character Trade Award for Responsibility, I'd like to ask Principal Jake Haley of Costa Mesa High School.
Yes, good evening, President Matoye, Dr. Navarro, members of the board, executive cabinet. My pleasure to be here tonight to talk about Belin Godinez for the area of responsibility.
See? She's up there on her own.
Oh, you bet. See, see you knew. What defines Belin, like, I know it's my responsibility, you know, to get up every morning, go to work, and try to be a good father. And she, in 22 years in education, I know it only looks like two for me, but in 22 years, more than any student I've come across embodies everything that it means to be a responsible student. Our responsibility from the age of kindergarten to get an education, to master everything we can, and to love learning. And more importantly is our responsibility to love people. And her smile says it all. It is contagious. You see her, you immediately feel better about being you, and it's a reminder for you. And so sophomore year, we had a responsibility moment, and we had a team meeting because Belin was needing to be away from our campus to go to a hospital in San Diego. It's where she needed to be. And we, as a team, got together and said, "We can support you." And it was like that huddle in Hoosiers, the movie, where we're all kind of saying, "Hey, look, you know, we can do home hospital. This is what it can look like for you. We can do these and these." And she was the Jimmy Chitwood of the moment and said, "I can do it. I can do it." And our teachers were amazing at going, some of them driving to meet her, to give her work. She maintained all of her coursework, just was steadfast in her responsibility for school and to be the best Belin that she could be. She came back to us. She's part of our medical pathway, which requires hours of service in the evenings for sports. And she's, you know, still back to us, kind of becoming the best Belin and kind of getting back to normal. Did I go to one event where she wasn't present? No. She was at every single thing with a smile on her face, really kind of thinking about her passion. And now you start to see her combine the two together. She has a passion for the medical pathway and especially athletics. She wants to go into psychology. And so what she really wants to do is to help athletes who have been injured get into them and help them work through the injury to know that they have the responsibility to get back out there and be the best person that they can be. Kevin Durant's gonna be her first person, I believe. Excited to see what happens for that. She is going to be attending the University of California, Irvine. She's gonna be a fantastic citizen for us. We're so happy that she's gonna be local. Belin, congratulations.
And now I'd like to ask Corona Del Mar High School Principal Kathy Scott to present the Character Trade Award for Trustworthiness.
Good evening, President Matoye and school board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and all of our guests. So this is Ty Thabbitt, and I'm very honored to be standing here beside him. Ty is one of those kids everybody likes. You ask anybody, "Do you know Ty?" Oh, yeah. Everybody loves him. He's an amazing young man and just has every quality that you would want in your son. His parents are here, and his older brother, who's already a college graduate, is here tonight to celebrate this with him. These are some things teachers have said about Ty. Ty is an outstanding student at our Corona Del Mar High School. He's exceptionally trustworthy, always straightforward and honest in all of his communications. Ty can be trusted to accomplish tasks exceptionally well and always on time. Even when there are challenges in his accomplishment of tasks, Ty will push through about any constraints that he comes by, and he makes a plan of how to overcome them and always find solutions. Trustworthiness is a quality that teachers admire most about Ty, especially as a part of Future Business Leaders of America program that he is a part of. That's one of our largest organizations, and Ty has been very dependent upon, depended on by the leaders in his own leadership role. In class, Ty also is a source of leadership for fellow students who trust him to help them with assignments and tutoring. They know that Ty will not judge them, mock, or make them feel bad in any way for coming to him for any extra help. So we are very proud of Ty Thabbitt for this award of trustworthiness tonight.
Last but not least, I'd like to ask early college high school principal Dave Martinez to present the Character Trade Award for Caring.
Well, good evening, President Matoye, members of the cabinet, Dr. Navarro, members of our board, and distinguished guests. We graduated our seniors 12 days ago, and unfortunate Elise and her family scheduled a while ago to go on a trip, so she is not here. But I wanted to let you know that early college high school, it's a very difficult task to select our six students. It really is a 50-minute meeting where all of our staff's involved to basically narrow it down to our six selections. So to make it to this level is tremendous. But Elise McHenry has just been the epitome of caring at our school. So just some words I just wanted to say about her. Elise has always been thoughtful and insightful when answering questions in class. She is the kind of person that would just be taking everybody's opinions and stances in mind and really just come across with a very caring demeanor. And this has been since day one, when she's been at the school. She's always treating people equitably. She shows her appreciation for our staff just over and above, just a caring nature. You know, we have staff members that greet our kids at the door, and she will greet our staff even when they're just coming in. She gets in so early just to say hello, and that means a lot. And it's been like that for four years. Not only that, she is just a great person in the kitchen. She makes some great baked goods, and I can vouch for that. And I've had to cut down on that, but you know that a lot of our staffers will say that she's always been very appreciative. But when you talk to our students, they will tell you to the T, it's just, that is the way she is, whether it's in the classroom, weekends, outside, just a very caring nature. And it's always face-to-face, and it's always in person, which you know that's where it's just most genuine. She has completed nearly 400 hours of community service in the areas of the Fritos Cinema Program, the Orange County Film Society, and also the Surf Rider Foundation Beach Cleanup. Elise will be going to Humboldt State this fall, and she'll be studying accounting. So even in accounting, you need caring people. So I'd like to recognize Elise, and I know she is very much happy in just being to receive this award. So thank you again.
If we could ask all the Character Trade Award winners to come on up for one group photo, please?
Yeah. While they're coming up, I'd like to just thank all the principals. We added a new format this year, which we're gonna repeat next year, where we just get together and talk about this and see who represents who. And, you know, you made a comment to Jennifer about the poster being bigger than she is. Those posters are bigger than they are because they're bigger than life.
And for those of you that aren't really paying attention, they're hanging out in the lobby as you leave tonight. And stay there, 'cause all your parents are taking pictures, too. And principals.
Don't be shy, parents, you can come up.
Oh, yeah. Get good shots.
This is parent picture-taking time. Don't be shy.
Parents, and behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you all for instilling the values in your children that allow them to be selected for one of these honors. I like this part of the job. Alrighty, Mrs. Bowler.
Well, thank you for having me again. Our president is on vacation, and her stand-in had a family emergency, so if you're stuck with me, I'm sorry. That's okay. Sorry. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here.
I just wanted to fill you in on our last Harbor Council meeting, which was the third. We had all of our presidents bring their, if they weren't continuing, their replacement president, and they could bring three of their board members. So they could come and see what Harbor Council does. They could hear from Dr. Navarro. Julie gave a mini-training on things that we need to do. We got the new calendar, you know, et cetera. It was well-attended. We had breakfast, coffee, and tea for everyone. And I think people understood that Harbor Council is here to help the schools and, you know, the volunteers and all. So it was very nice. And I wanted to let you know that we had over 700, no, 477,000 volunteer hours this past school year. We'll do something a little bit later on to give you the full number, but I was the historian, so I was in charge of getting those numbers, and I felt it was very impressive. So anyway, we have fabulous parents and community supporters for our schools. And another thing to report is Grace O'Brien from Newport Harbor High School, who is our Reflections winner from Newport Harbor High School. Won Reflections, first place in dance at Harbor Council, at Fourth District PTA, at State PTA, and is now receiving the highest honor at National PTA. Yes. So anyway, she, it was a dance video. Hopefully, I'm gonna do this right. I didn't know I had to... See, I don't even know how to double tap.
It's not a touchscreen.
It's not? Oh, shoot.
Thanks, Jeff.
They said it's that one. Oh, see?
Old school.
That's why I have children.
And grandchildren. Mrs. Bowler, what was the theme?
What?
What was the theme last year? Do you remember?
Heroes around us.
Heroes around us.
So this is her personal statement that she wrote to go along with this fabulous dance. "This dance was important to me because it represented a real story from my life. It was about losing someone close to me, but a hero to me was a person who was there for me through everything and gave me constant support." So that was pretty impressive.
Yes, it was.
And I don't know if she is going to be, I know she'll be recognized at national convention. I don't know if she'll be there. So I am attending national convention, which is next week. We leave on Wednesday. So if indeed she's there, we'll get pictures and give you back a report.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
Anyway, thank you, and that's my report for tonight.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all for a fabulous year and for all the support you give to our schools and our parents. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Alrighty, informal reports. Dr. Navarro.
Okay, thank you. As you know, there are several superintendent advisories that we run every year, one for teachers, one for classified, one for students, and one for parents. And those are really highlights usually for me every month, an opportunity to engage with groups and not really have an agenda or anything, but really to just exchange ideas. Often, they ask for information so they can understand the context of what we're doing better. And this year, I dragged John Drake into it with me, because what we wanted to do was to create a mini-advisory out of the big advisory. So one hour before every meeting, we would call, we would call a meeting, we'd have two reps from each zone. So one for secondary, one for elementary. So we had a total of eight parents who would join us, and they became our Curriculum Advisory Committee for Parents. And I want to thank John for all the work he did. I learned a lot. So, you know, imagine having a whole hour with the TOSs, okay, like Shannon Haney and Suzanne. They would sit there and identify key elements that nobody really understands that are so important to reading. Or math TOSs, who would talk about the new framework and the new elements in teaching those. Those are things that don't get across very often to parents, but in one-hour meeting with this group, they got great depth and great questions. I mean, that's where I learned about the importance of complex texts and accessing complex texts. And if kids can't do that by third grade, they're gonna have a hard time. And that's why there's this big focus. It's not just on, you know, phonemic awareness and phonics and so on. So we sat at the last meeting, and John couldn't be there because he had a daddy duty. His son was graduating from my school this year, so he had to, you know, he got to do that. But he did send Gabe, and the parents gave us suggestions on how to communicate next year. So I'm gonna take my notes, and I'll ask John to bring his notes, and we're gonna sit down and try to summarize everything. And hopefully, by our next meeting, maybe John and I can have a dual report about how do we communicate with parents? What are our strategies gonna be? These very complex, detailed issues that are now... These very complex, detailed issues that are now inherent in every one of our lessons every day for our students, kindergarten through, pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. So I look forward to bringing that to you, and I hope that John agrees that we should do that again next year because it was a great opportunity for a small group of parents to ask great questions and to point us in the right direction.
Thank you. Mrs. Olson.
Well, good evening. This certainly is the time of year for change and celebration and transition, and so tonight I just would like to share that we have announced some shifts in the principalships and some appointments. And so at Newport Coast, we have Summer Harding, who is joining that community to lead them. At Sonora, Mia Dodge is moving over to that school and again, take her gifts that she has and her interests and work with that staffing community. And then new into our principal ranks, we have our assistant, current assistant principals, Ryan Locker, who will be going to California. He's returning there after being an administrator, so that's a nice transition for him and the site. He is very familiar with it. And then at Newport Heights, Terry Clark, who has been the assistant principal, is slipping into the principalship there. It does still leave us with openings with Wilson and Whittier and Harborview that we are working diligently to find the right fit and talented folks to take the helm there. We also have Costa Mesa Middle School principalship opening that we have closed the posting and we are now screening that, so we will be moving forward. And then also at the secondary level, I think everybody heard the cheer. That's twice now that I haven't been able to be the one to announce and congratulate Michael Wagner being the principal now at Back Bay Montevista High School, which is just fantastic. So with that, it is a very busy season that we continue to recruit on multiple levels.
So as we're winding down our school year, we're in the Facilities Department winding up for summer, which is going to be a very, very busy summer, particularly with the third and final phase of our air conditioning projects at our elementary schools, which will now mean that at the start of school this fall, every one of our elementary schools will be air-conditioned. There are seven schools being done this summer. The contractors are submitting paperwork and getting everything prepared so that the day after students and teachers are out, they're prepared to hit the ground hard at Enson, Mariners, Newport Heights, Back Bay, Whittier, Newport L., and Harborview. HAC is going to be going full bore this summer, and it's going to be a lot of fun.
Good evening. It's good to be with you tonight. At recent meeting, you approved a plan to help our employees that are part of our alternative retirement system, and those are folks that are seasonal or work under a certain number of hours during the year. And so you have what's called an alternative retirement system, which is very helpful to these folks because it's a portable retirement system. They can take that with them if they leave the district, or they can, it's completely portable. And so to your most recent meeting, you allowed us to move forward in putting that, have an online system for them so that they can view their account online. And so we're making good progress on that, and we hope to have that in place here by in the next few weeks.
Good evening. I wanted to provide you with an update regarding the work that the Report Card Review Team at the elementary level has been working on. Looking back at last year, knowing that we were going to be working with new materials for English Language Arts and Mathematics, we realized last year that we were going to have to make some revisions to the report card. And there was quite a process that occurred last year. With that process, we started out with principals first, and that was having some deep discussions in regards to what are the types of questions we're trying to get at with looking at and revising a report card. And two areas really popped out for us, and we developed a process. And I always want to give credit where credit is due, so we called on Dr. Consensus, Dwayne Cox, to assist us with the process. And we ended up with two questions. The first one was, what do we hope to accomplish with an ideal report card? And that was a nice question to frame the work that we're trying to ultimately achieve. And then the second part was, what's right, wrong, missing, or confusing about our current report card? The process from there was every site principal went back to their site, and they had a discussion with the teachers on both of those fronts in regards to what do we want to accomplish with the ideal report card and what's right, wrong, missing, or confusing. Once every site principal had a staff meeting and met with all teachers and brought back a whole lot of material and information in regards to teachers' thoughts on those two areas, we had a very long principal meeting, and principals really dug in, and we developed some themes around all of the feedback from all 22 of our elementary schools. And with that work, we were able to create a report card review team. And that team consisted of teachers from every zone, principals from every zone, district TOSSAs, district administrators. And we got together and we used all of that work that the principals gathered, and we created a prototype. And from there, once we had a prototype, we were able to send that prototype back out to the sites towards the end of the year last year and get additional feedback at a principal meeting with the, at a meeting at the school site with the principals. Every teacher had a second opportunity to weigh in on the prototype of the report card. That came back to the review team, and by the end of June, we had come to consensus around making very significant changes to the elementary report card. This year, Jennifer Mishney and the Ed Tech team, they had two different rounds of teacher feedback regarding how is it going with the new report card. We used thought exchange to get the feedback from our teachers. And with that, we met yesterday as a report card review team. Jennifer did a great job of sharing with us all the information in regards to teachers' thoughts, and there was just a plethora of positive feedback from our teachers regarding the changes that have been made. We made a few small adjustments to the report card, but we do feel that it was very confirming. So all of that work, all of that time, and all of that effort that was put into making some pretty big changes for how we communicate with our parents, I think really paid off, and it was evident in the feedback. So again, I want to just recognize all the members of the Report Card Review Team. They did a fantastic job, and as always, Dr. Consensus Cox did a fantastic job as well.
Before you shift over, I have a question. Have you run it by parents? I mean, only because, being a parent, sometimes I didn't know what I needed to know, which you've done a great job with, making sure that parents know that, but I just wondered how easy it is for parents to understand.
Yeah. Through the thought exchange feedback and how it was rated, there was a lot of comment in regards to conversations that teachers are having with the parents and how they are able to better understand the report card. So through that process, I do believe we captured a portion of the sentiment from our parents with working with the new tool.
Thank you.
And for our Human Relations Task Force update, we had a meeting last Wednesday, June 5th, and the task force received guidance on the role of the task force, and we're given more clarity on a roadmap for formulating recommendations by Allison from Orange County Human Relations. Dr. Navarro provided a memo to the committee on deadlines for recommendations set for July 16th to be implemented for this September, which we're calling Phase 1. Then there'll be ongoing work after that, which we'll be calling Phase 2. The task force went into their four subcommittees, worked really well together, made a lot of headway. They're really working hard and working together well. In our next meeting tomorrow night, the Orange County Human Relations will review some of the overlaps that the committees have so that they're not duplicating work, and then turn them loose in their subcommittees to brainstorm and to start coming up with recommendations for the next meeting on July 10th. Our next community workshop is June 26th. It will be held in the city of Newport Beach at the Community Room, and the topic will be religious tolerance. So that's our next community workshop.
Good evening. You all do know, I believe, that we've been going through federal program monitoring, a review where auditors come in and really look very closely to make sure that our programs are in alignment with rules and regulations and monies are being spent appropriately. It was a formal review this year, which means auditors show up and actually review for about a month's time, from the beginning of May through the beginning of June, five different areas of our federal programs. Title 1, our compensatory education; Title 2, program growth; Title 3, EL programs; our career technical education programs; and then also fiscal monitoring. The formal review, although the work began probably back in October, November, the formal review took place from May, the beginning of May through June 7th. A lot of the work, as I said, began earlier than that. I think Vanessa stopped sleeping around March to prepare for all this, but I'm happy to say that her hard work and the hard work of really all the divisions that came together under Vanessa's direction, I am happy to say that they found, they only had one finding. That finding was actually something that was shared with you in November before this, and that finding had to do with credentialing issue with one of our teachers, which we've been working with since then to rectify. So huge thank you to Vanessa with the many sleepless nights and getting the troops together to get everything in alignment and receive the commendations that we did.
Well done.
It's been a while since we've talked about the charter, School Isaac. Just a little bit of background, this board, this district, opposed the application or the petition for the charter. However, the charter did get approval from the Orange County School Board, and they approved them. So this is a county-authorized charter. It is not a Newport Mesa charter. However, they do exist within our tenants' area. So the update is that we have been working through legal counsel to negotiate some form of an agreement for facility use within our school district. And I just want to report that we have reached terms, and that agreement will be presented to the board for consideration at a special board meeting this coming Friday, which is June 14th, tentatively set for 3:30 p.m. There will be official notice that will go out, and that item will be agendized.
And we just received that, correct? I mean, we...
We just received information through our legal counsel that the charter has agreed to our terms, and that's why we're moving forward with an approval process.
A special meeting, right. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Dr. Doc.
This morning at our cabinet meeting, Dr. Navarro challenged us with the question of what makes it worth it. And I want to share two of the things that have kind of happened, especially this time of year, that definitely make it worth it when you, you know, to get up and go to work every day. And the first one is our Special Educator Tea event that we held over at Early College High School, and I appreciate those of you who were able to be there. And it was a phenomenal event. What it's nice is it's, so often, folks who work in special education don't feel that they get a lot of recognition or kudos, and it was really nice to have parents and students recognize them and the hard work that they do on behalf of the students that we work with. We had several fun performances and acts, but I think the biggest draw of the afternoon was definitely our Master of Ceremonies, and we had Forbes Painter, who is a student at Corona Del Mar, and he stole the show with his, you know, his sense of humor and his, just great sense of being and the way that he introduced everyone in all of the acts. So I already talked to him about doing a repeat next year, so he's down for that. So that was one of our events. And then last week, Friday, we had our Young Athletes Program, Special Olympics, over at Estancia High School. And, you know, I started my career in preschool special ed, so that's always, you know, near and dear to my heart. But it's like one of the best events, and I think that especially this year, every year it gets better. We streamline it, we cut it down. Everybody kind of knows what they're doing. I appreciate the board members that were there and able to participate in that day. But I think what really struck me this year is we had a lot of different folks out there. So, you know, when we started this, we brought our special ed staff out there, and our coordinators, our clerical staff, we had our adaptive PE teachers lead it all, and we've kind of expanded and co-opted other people, and other people have asked to be a part of it. So we had some of our bus drivers, who I see here tonight, were out there after they drove the kids. They were out there on the field pushing wheelchairs. They were directing parking and all of that, and that was really nice. We had folks from our business department who came, and they were there to cheer, and they got kind of roped into helping and doing, you know, some of the flag events and the parachute events. And then what's really nice is that all of the principals come out, too, that have their schools represented. I think that says a lot, it says a lot to parents, and we just had a huge turnout of parents this year. And it was just a really upbeat, very nice event, and, you know, Estancia cheer and Estancia band and, you know, and their special, you know, special cheerleading program there. They all, so it was all just wonderful. So those are what makes it worth it.
I love that program. It's wonderful. Thank you. All righty, community input on...
Oh, I have my light on.
Oh, you did have your light on. I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at lights. Mrs. Bartow.
Thank you. Super quick, just to piggyback on, sorry to put you on the spot, Dr. Sir. Could we get, maybe I make a suggestion, to have some kind of parent training on the report cards? I feel like a lot of parents, English and Spanish-speaking, don't understand what the new ones look like. I do, but I obviously went through the process and contributed to it, and I know a lot of friends have asked, when they've got their report cards back, how is it different? They're, yeah, they're not seeing the differences.
Yeah, on our district website, we do have some FAQs and a lot of guidance around the types of questions that our parents would have, but we're happy to have additional comments or additional work in regards to how to get the word out and share. Absolutely. Thank you.
Maybe Harbor Council PTA could have it in-service, and then that could spread out to all the school sites that way, too.
We still have the reserved spots, and I think there's lots of people that are by the door.
I'm sorry, what?
They can sit up front.
Ms. Anderson noticed that the reserved spots are on the chairs, but two things. Number one, they were reserved for people that have already left, and number two, people don't like to sit in the front, but there's plenty of seating up front, so come on up and sit down. Thank you. All righty. We have community cards, so that means Mrs. Black gets to go.
Okay. Speaker cards for items on Discussion/Action Calendar will be held until that item is considered by the board. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on action items. Consent Calendar, Resolution Consent Calendar, Discussion/Action Calendar. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there's a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per item. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments. Depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak, the board, staff, and members of the public may request that a specific item on the consent be moved to Discussion/Action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendar. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
All of these have to do with item number 18, which is our budget, so we'll go through the consent calendar first, and we'll call you up before we do those items, so it's more relevant, if that's all, if you understand that. Okay, the consent calendar. I need a motion, a second, and if...
I'm, I just, I wanted to ask some questions, but I'm not going to poll them.
Okay.
Second.
I didn't hear who moved.
Martha.
Mrs. Flor moved, Mrs. Black seconded. Now discussion. Mrs. Bartow, which number, please, for the public?
17A6 and 17A7, and, oh, actually, 17A5, 6, and 7, they're, just for my understanding.
Do you need just clarification on?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Holcomb?
Question.
This is on seventeen A5, agreement with Corinne Losscott?
Yes. Corinne Losscott Consulting is a firm that is, has expertise in the state grant program for facilities, and they help Mrs. Zaresny and her staff in completing all of the paperwork that's required for us to be able to maintain our eligibility and then to complete specific grants and receive our funds. For example, recently, we just got paperwork back still on the Davidson Field project. So, it's a very, very complicated process applying for the state funding program, and that's what this consultant assists us in doing and has been doing for many, many years. Amendment number one to-
Oh, just a quick question then. For that one, it says it's district expenditure reporting. Is that what part of, that was the part-
Yes. So, one of the things with the state is because it's a matching program, the state matches us on a percentage of dollars that are spent on the project, we have to prove through an audit how much we spent on the project, so that the state's dollars are matched to those. And if they disallow an approval, if there's not sufficient other funds, then we would potentially have to give back part of the grant. We work very hard with these consultants and our staff to make sure we don't have to give money back.
Thank you. And then six and seven are kind of the same question, because they go through the Orange County Department of Education Superintendent for the software, and just, the word, language seemed unfamiliar to me.
Sure. So, the Orange County Department of Education, because it has such a large number of constituent districts, works with the districts to try to figure out where we would all be best served by developing a particular software program, and all of us using that same software program, and in essence, reducing the cost to all of us by doing so. Additionally, since they act as our bank with the Orange County Treasurer, their accounting software is the software that we use. Then for the HR software, also for our payrolls, et cetera, we all, as county districts, use these two programs as the backbone, basically, of our payroll and accounting systems.
So, that this is like an estimate of what they think our usage will be, sort of like electric company or something like that?
Yes. So, what they do is they, they tell all of us districts, this is what the cost is going to be, and here's your share based on your enrollment.
Okay. Thank you.
What's up there now?
Was that okay for both six and seven? I'm not done with Mrs. Bartow. Six and seven?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Anderson?
On the same contract, is there a reason why it says the payment is going to the superintendent of Orange County, like superintendent of schools? Why does it not say, like, I would think it would say Orange County Department of Ed? What is the specific heading for that? Why is that?
The super-
It has to go to a person?
Well, that, that's, yeah, it goes to the office of the superintendent, and the office of the superintendent is the one who manages all of the finances of the Orange County Department of Education. So, that's why a lot of things here come officially to the superintendent of our district.
So, it's a protocol on how you, how money goes, it's how they work their money?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other-
But it's also referenced in the contract. It, reference to ads where they identify who the two entities are, and they always reference at the county level, the superintendent, when you're looking at any of their contracts. So, in the future, it won't be so confusing, because they always reference the superintendent as the-
I was like, that's a lot of money to the superintendent.
I know, I know. But you notice they don't name the superintendent, yeah.
Ms. Anderson, was that your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I will when we're done voting. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, 7-0. We have seats. I know you love and absolutely do not want to sit in the front, but trust me, it's okay. So, there's lots of seats up here. Alrighty then. We offered, that's right. Alrighty, now we are moving to public hearings. And at this point, we will go to Mr. Trader and Mrs. Kaylee. Just relax.
Flowers. Yes. Wait. So, good evening, President Metoyer, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, esteemed guests. I want to thank you for being here this evening. We're very excited, because, you know, kids around Orange County got prom, but we get tonight. And tonight, we have the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, we have the LCAP Federal Addendum, and we have the budget. And so, Jeff and I have worked together to coordinate, and Sarah, because she's also presenting a really important plan and budget, and in solidarity, we wanted to celebrate. But to, to bring a sense of excitement to what we're sharing with you, because it is the culmination of a collaboration and a lot of hard work. So, each year, we bring before you the Local Control and Accountability Plan, and this is this year's iteration. It is a three-year template, so it was written for the years of 2017, 18, 2018, and 2019, 2020, and then each year, we do an annual update. So, what the LCAP is, is a local control and accountability plan. It's a state template and a three-year plan, and it's a requirement for all districts. It aligns to the budget, and it is co-presented, and it has to be presented in two separate meetings. We present it for a public hearing in one meeting, and then at a subsequent meeting, it's up for board approval. Post-approval, then it gets submitted to the Orange County Department of Education for review and either questions or further approval. So, why it came about is because of the Local Control Funding Formula, and affectionately known as LCFF, and that is funds for most districts, and most districts refer to their general fund as their LCFF base. And that is just a general number that's based on all of the students in the district. And then the LCFF supplemental funds are additional funding based on the number of students who typically struggle, who are English learner, low-income, foster youth, or homeless. And then altogether, the students are considered unduplicated, an unduplicated count, and that's essentially that even if you fit in more than one category, you're only counted one time for funding purposes. And that is true in most districts throughout the state. However, in our district, we are a community-funded district, and so we don't go through the same mechanisms. We don't get additional funding. However, we are held to the same standards. And so, locally, what we elect to do is put local funds into a separate category, and we treat it as a categorical, and so we refer to it as LCFF supplemental, but it's important to remember that those are our local property tax dollars.
Less somebody.
So, we have eight goals in our district, and these goals have not changed for a number of years. We're being very consistent with those goals, and they're around English Language Arts and English Language Development, together in tandem as the state framework calls for those standards. Goal two is for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. Goal three is the other courses of study required under ED Code in a broad course of study, History, Social Science, Foreign Language, Music, Visual and Performing Arts, and Physical Education. Goal four is about School Climate, Student Engagement. Goal five is Parent Involvement, and we will be renaming that to Family Engagement to match federal guidelines and also to match what the state is pushing for, which is a little bit more inclusivity. Goal six is Basic Services and Operations, affectionately known as the Williams Requirements under the Williams Settlement, and that is for teacher credentialing, instructional materials, and facilities. Goal seven is College and Career Readiness, and goal eight is for our implementation of Signature Academies.
Is number eight required?
No. Number eight is one of our own locally-developed ones, and then we, through conversation with a number of our stakeholders, we are talking about possibly subsuming goal eight under goal seven, because Signature Academies really do align with our college and career readiness. So, the LCAP has a number of components. When it was originally created, the idea was this would be an easy-to-read, parent-friendly document that would be about 15 pages.
I'm sorry.
Yes. And since then, it has morphed into something else, and it is difficult to have something that is both easy to understand and explain a budget, and try and align and help understand what is an increased and improved service compared to a base. So, in there now are a number of components, and lucky for us, the template is going to change again, and so there, the state will be bringing a new template to their, their board in November of 2019. So, we're looking forward to that new experience.
Oh, yay.
The plan summary talks about the story of our district. It has an overview of our performance. It also describes comprehensive support and improvement, and has a budget summary. So, we did not have to keep a narrative budget summary. We elected to keep that, because we thought that although it was a nice attempt for the state to create a three-page budget overview, we also wanted to provide a little more explanation. We're limited in characters on that budget overview, and it's not adaptable to our unique circumstances. So, it refers to LCFF and base and supplemental, but we, throughout our plan, really try to highlight the fact that these are local property tax dollars and that we are in a different circumstance. So, we have kept both our own budget summary narrative, as well as the required parent budget overview. I also want to make a note about the Comprehensive Support and Improvement section. We have two schools that are in comprehensive support and improvement status. It is not the same as program improvement that used to exist under No Child Left Behind, but it is for schools that don't necessarily meet certain targets. So, for Montevista, their graduation, their two-year graduation rate was not high enough. It should have, it needs to be at least 67.5% over two years, and it was not. So, as a district, we need to now look and see, how are we going to support the school to focus on its goals of graduating students? And then with Back Bay, at that school, when you look at the state dashboard, if you have schools that are in all red and only one other category, then they are eligible for comprehensive support and improvement. And one of the things that we want to recognize is that at Back Bay and Montevista, they're both very unique schools, and they serve a unique student population. And the thing about those schools is it's not just a standalone school, but every school in the district contributes to the status of our schools. So, we're really looking at supporting Back Bay and Montevista as a system, looking at our, our credit recovery process, looking at our process for supporting students with mental health issues, with drug abuse and addiction issues, and really trying to find a comprehensive way to support them in a multi-tiered system of supports. So, we recognize that the way that the dashboard is constructed, it is very difficult for those two schools to get out of this status, and we're going to continue to work very hard with them and to support them. So, the other components are an annual update. That gives the status of what did we say we were going to do this year? What happened? How much money did we say we were going to spend, and how much money did we actually spend? So, the, the plan is set up in tables to say, what did you say? What happened? How much did you say you'd spend, and how much did you spend then? So, it is rather lengthy, that section, but you kind of get the gist of it once you start looking through all of the tables. Then we describe the stakeholder engagement, which is essentially a list of all of the different various groups that gave us input and how they went about doing that. We have a survey to the parents and the students in our district. We consulted with a number of groups, and we'll be showing you a listing of that later in the presentation. And then, in the template, it, frozen in time, is our goal, our actions and services for 2017, 18, and 18, 19, and we can make adjustments moving forward to 1920, but we cannot go back and edit anything in the goals section. So, even if we thought that we were going to get a certain outcome, you have to refer back to the annual update to see if it didn't quite hit, and so maybe we lowered the expectation for 1920, or maybe we raised it, depending on the outcome. So, that is one of the drawbacks of the design of this particular template, is it would be redundant to then reiterate in the plan section, all of the different outcomes. So, there again, we have the eight goals, we have our expected outcomes, actions, services, and budgeted expenditures. Next, there's an essay on the demonstration of increased and improved services, and essentially the purpose of that is to say, you said you were going to spend X amount of money from Local Control Funding Formula supplemental funds. So, how did you do that? Did you spend it in a school-wide fashion or a district-wide fashion? And what's the justification for doing that? How do you think this is really going to principally support unduplicated students? That is a three-year running essay, so you have the 17, 18 essay, and then on top of that, the 18, 19 essay, and then most recently, our 1920. They're very similar. We have not changed many of our actions and services in support of our unduplicated count of students. And the newest component is the local LCAP Federal Addendum, and what that does is it addresses certain prompts that are required on the federal side of the plan that the LCAP never asked for. And so, we will be submitting the LCAP Federal Addendum directly to the California Department of Education for review and approval, and that is in service of our federal funds, as John mentioned, Title I, Title II, Title III, and new to us is Title IV. So, this is what the LCFF budget overview for parents looks like. Essentially, the, we get an Excel spreadsheet, and we have to enter information, and then when you push the button, it creates these charts and graphs. And so, it's meant to show you the proportion of funds that go toward different activities, the federal funds, the local funds, other state funds, the total overall funding that we get, and then the component that is the LCFF supplemental and concentration grant, money that we would get as new money if we were a different district, but money that we put in our, our categorical approach within our district. So, for 1920, we estimate that our LCFF target is $16,94,160. So, that would be the target we're trying to hit. In addition, we have this budget overview that says, all right, we're going to give an update on increased and improved services for the students from 18, 19. And that was what did you say you were going to spend, and then how much were your estimated actuals? And it is important for us to point out, these are estimated actuals. We can't know what we actually spent until well after July 1, and we closed the books. So, we are doing our best to try and estimate, but this is not a for-sure thing until all the money is out the door. And so, what you see here is that we budget, we budgeted $16,183,452 for planned actions to support students with high needs, and what we actually spent was, in our estimate, So, there is a difference, and it sounds like a lot. And so, one of the things we need to do is also take a look at, what did we plan and what actually happened? And throughout every single goal in the LCAP, we do that. We say, well, here's some things that are material differences. And essentially, some of the big components are, we thought that we were going to hire four additional school psychologists, and we were going to split-fund them. Part of their work was about all kids, and part of their work was going to be targeted on our low-income EL, et cetera. What we found is the need was so great for all, that we really needed to make that purchase for all, and so we did get four additional school psychologists, but we, we allocated our general fund dollars toward that. So, it wasn't something that we felt would merit the increased and improved service toward the particular population. Another difference was in, some of the, the dollars that we thought that we would spend on communications and supporting attendance were part of our regular doing business. We couldn't, again, one of those things where we looked at it, and we thought, we can't segregate out a certain dollar toward a certain population of students. In the course of doing business, they were, all students were equally served. And then finally, we had, and that was a difference of about $30,000. The last difference is our PE specialists. As, if you've read the plan, you see that when we have our elementary specialists in science, music, and PE, we split-fund them as well. Half of their, what we believe their purpose is, is about general support for all students, and half of it is about allowing teachers time to be able to plan and to prepare and to provide interventions on behalf of students. And so, 50% of their salary is LCFF. Well, in the PE area, we had a long leave of absence, and we had a difference between our estimate and our actual. So, that pretty much explains the $308,000. But throughout the annual update, whenever you're looking for material differences, those pieces are called out. Sometimes it's as little as $5,000, so, so there are some variations, but these were the really, the big-ticket items. Okay? So, how, how can we go about looking for the data? Well, a lot of the data analysis that's part of our plan is based on the California School Dashboard. We come to you in November to bring the local indicators, those things that are not publicly-available data that you can get from taking a test, but things that we have to do through surveys and through self-reflection tools. So, the California School Dashboard presents the information on various indicators that we report on also in the plan. It used to have pies. Now, we have gauges. Big change. It was big news in education. And then the other thing is, they laid it out this way with sort of these tiles, so it would be easier to look at rather than a long list. And then unfortunately, when you go down, they're not clickable on these if you go to the website, but when you scroll down the page, there are additional, they break them out by chronic absenteeism, and you can look at the different student groups. I also want to point out that if you go to the View Additional Reports, there's a lot more reports than what they call a five-by-five grid, and that gives you a lot more information about the student groups, and you can also dig down into how schools performed. So, we use this as a lot of our analysis in both the overall picture, but then in looking at how our student groups do, as well as how our schools do. And then the schools have this analysis that they are embedding into their plans for next year. Okay? So, that's some of the, the sources of data and some of the components of the plan. So, not everybody wants to read 321 pages, so what we did is we narrowed down the LCAP goals, actions, and services. We leave the money in the plan. We leave the money in the plan, but we tried to provide a general snapshot of the bigger things that we're doing in our plan. And what we do in our district is we show both our core expenditures and our core actions. And then, we also are showing what we consider our supplemental actions. And so, we have, this is available on our website in English and Spanish. It's what we use when we talk with our stakeholder groups. And it's one for each goal. And we try and break it out by elementary, secondary, and things that are all grades. In this document, if you see italics, it indicates a change of some kind from prior year. If it's not, it just means it's something that we've been doing. And that's really important to us, that we are consistent and that we stick with what we say we are going to do and we don't just keep changing everything every year. And if there's an asterisk, what that indicates is that it's either totally or partially funded with our locally-funded LCFF supplemental funds. And so, this shows you at a glance, the many things that are happening, mostly in education services, but also with student services, on behalf of trying to educate our students with our materials, with our additional instructional aids, or with our teachers, our part-time hourly intervention teachers, when we have the technology and the Chromebook Initiative and the different phases that that's going through. And then, also, the work that we want to make sure that we're highlighting, that we are committed to inclusive practices for our students with individual education programs and that we are really trying to do all of the best that we can to educate our friends alongside their grade-level peers. So, each of these areas outlines the many things that are happening, whether it's our dual immersion programs or our implementation of history, social science materials next year in grade six through 12, a lot of our teachers on special assignment, our secondary teachers on special assignment who are partly out of the classroom and partly in class. And then, we also have our federally-funded elementary TOSSAs in English Language Arts, ELD, and Mathematics represented here. And you can see in Goal Four, that is where we have the school psychologists. And also, you'll notice that we're adding with some federal funds, some behavior specialists, and some part-time intervention staff members to support our elementary schools. We know through stakeholder input that that has been a need, a growing need to support our students socially and emotionally. And then, we wanted to make sure we highlighted that we're going to continue the work of the Human Relations Task Force. In parent involvement, as I said, we'll be making an adjustment to the language in the next iteration about family engagement. But really, that's about decision-making from a parent perspective and also ways that we can support student academic achievement. And so, we outline the different ways that we have advisory committees and site-based parent education, because we really believe that where parents are going to feel the impact of our plans is not as a district, but at the school level. And so, really, at the end of the day, our parents and families feel like, what's in this for my child? And that's represented in the school planning process. So, a lot of the work that we did around asking for feedback from the school sides is saying, please, as you're asking about your school plan, share that with us because that will tell us what we need to reflect in our district plan. For basic services and operations, we wanted to include some of the safety measures that we've included, as well as some of the augmentation that we're doing around finalizing the air-conditioning plan. And then, we also wanted to note that we have the Welcome Center and we're maintaining that. And of course, it was renamed after Karen Kendall, who recently passed, and we're just really pleased that we have an engaging and efficient and positive experience there because she would just love that. Lastly, we have the College and Career Readiness Goal and the implementation of our Signature Academies. And as we're discussing moving forward, one of the things that you will notice is many of our Signature Academies are career tech ed pathways. So, we really are excited about the ways that we are growing in that area and we're giving kids new and interesting ways to engage in their education and their future careers. So, we're excited about thinking about pulling those pieces together. And then, many of the things that we're planning under College and Career Readiness are staying the same in terms of counselor on special assignment and looking at NAVIANS, but really trying to augment, how are we using that tool and how can we use it even better? That was part of our feedback from the LCAP survey. And then, again, we have our secondary site-level instructional coaches, different from teachers on special assignment. And we'll be talking, I know later in the meeting, but the Phase Two of Intervention Compass, which is made by Mr. Elmer, as a student progress and monitoring system. And I know for us in the English learner programs, we're extremely excited about that as a vehicle to both monitor and then to reclassify our students. So, we're very, very pleased about all of these wonderful tools. So, in addition to the regular LCAP, we have the federal part of the plan. And so, what the purpose of this is, is to explain our basic systems and then also to say how we are expending funds. When I submitted this in February, I wrote a version of it and this one is very similar except it's pared down. Because since February and now, we were told that we actually have a 5,000-character limit, which if you've read the LCAP, you know would be difficult for me. And so, that, the boxes are now, have a lot less information, short and sweet, but the reviewers at the state really wanted us to be succinct. So, the reason why we have to have this is the federal funds require certain things of the plan and the LCAP, it wasn't convenient to redo the whole LCAP template, so they added on this addendum that we get to write. And then, that would be what the state will read. So, it's really taking into account, what are you planning in your LCAP? And then, how can we add on these additional components? There's a thing that we submit, bless you, in June, called the Consolidated Application. And that says, yes, we're applying for federal funds and here's how we've been spending it so far. And then, all of that together is the plan that would be considered the Every Student Succeeds Act Plan. And so, essentially, we, again, we have to address these four areas because these are the federal funds that our district applies for. And Title I is about improving basic programs, which is really our students who are in high poverty. And so, we have 15 schools that are Title I schools and we describe our Title I program. Title II is supporting effective instruction. We receive funding for professional development for certificated teachers and instructional aides and for principals. So, part of this plan addresses beyond what's required in Title II for the funding, but what is our system? Title III is about language instruction for English learners and immigrant students. And so, again, we explain, what do we do with the money, but kind of what's our overall program? And then, lastly, Title IV is student support and academic enrichment. And we are required to spend money in three different categories within Title IV. And so, what this document does then is lay out all of those things that we're required to address in Title I in the plan, aside and above from the money that we spend. And really, how do we align what we're doing with the Title I funds to supplement, but not supplant, what we're doing in our regular plan? And so, the thinking behind that is, you were already going to do certain things with your state and local funds, do that. And then, how does the federal funding layer on top of that? So, the Title I funds are supposed to layer. And that lists the different elementary Title and secondary Title I schools, our criteria for Title I participation, which is free and reduced-price meal eligibility, and then its concentrations of poverty. And then, lastly, the little piece right there talks about how our schools spend their Title I funds. And the majority of our elementary schools try to get additional part-time hourly support. Some of them will get aids, but primarily, it's for that part-time hourly support and then supplemental reading and mathematics. We also had to address efforts to reduce overuse of discipline practices for our students and that's just a general system-wide approach, how we monitor our teacher equity, meaning that we're not assigning more inexperienced and out-of-field teachers to Title I schools than other schools. And then, what are the approaches that we use for parent and family engagement? We have to reserve 1% of the Title I funds for that and we are allowed to keep some of it at the district level, but we push it all right back out to the schools. And so, the schools then have to use that particular little pot of funds about supporting parents and families and parent education. We also have to address our homeless students because part of Title I does support homeless students. And so, that addresses how we support our children with enrollment, attendance, and then trying to monitor their success. So, with Title II, we talk about our systems of support for our teachers at the beginning and throughout their careers, for principals, and then also what we do to build teacher capacity. And all of that that you see at the top under Systems of Professional Growth is our system. It has nothing to do with the Title I funding. And then, down at the bottom, our Proposed Services, which is to continue to support teacher induction, as well as to have a teacher orientation for our new teachers and really sort of support them in understanding how we expect things for them to be in Newport Mesa as new teachers. And then, we do have one elementary teacher on special assignment that we fund through Title II, and then just some general elementary math training. And then, with Title III funding, or Title III, we have to discuss how we support our parent engagement. We do have school community facilitators and district translators, not funded from Title III, but in service of making sure that our families have access to the language support as well as those relationships. And so, that lists all of the other ways that we try and promote family and community participation. And you'll notice that we put a majority of our Title III funds into personnel, really trying to shore up the academic program and professional development and coaching opportunities for our teachers. And then, lastly, we do a Summer Language Academy for our newcomer English students. I will be honest, we are seeing fewer and fewer newcomers each year, so our numbers are smaller, but we feel so strongly about this program and it gives kids such a great opportunity to connect. And it's also very good professional development for our teachers to work with an aide and also a pre-service teacher. And so, we are definitely maintaining that one for another year. And then, lastly, we provided School Smarts Parent Education, which is different from the Parent Institute for Quality Education. It's a PTA-generated program and it's delivered by our school community facilitators. We really did want that local support and that capacity building. And then, lastly, on Title IV, you see the three categories. We're required to spend a minimum of 20% from well-rounded educational opportunities. And so, as you may know, the College Readiness Block Grant has ended. A number of our schools use that money to provide Parent Institute. And so, since that money has ended, we will continue that through Parent, through Title IV. And what we'll be doing is a zone-level approach. With the safe and healthy students, again, we can support all overall health, we can support mental health and physical health, and we thought all of those categories fit. And that, again, was with our choice to provide the behavior specialists, the part-time intervention staff members. And then, the effective use of technology, we have to spend at least a little out of that, but we felt like the majority of the funds should go to the blue area. So, we're spending as little as possible out of the orange while still being compliant. And it can't be used to buy stuff anyway. And what we're going to focus on is teacher training to support digital citizenship. Okay? So, a few last things. We do always want to do better with stakeholder input. I could have meetings about LCAP till the cows come home, but sometimes people stop making eye contact with me. So, I do come to the Superintendent's Parent Advisory for at least twice, sometimes three times. We have all the ASBs provide input. I'm at the D-LAC frequently, principals' meetings, pretty much anybody who'll have me. And then, we also meet with our bargaining unit. I'm very pleased to always have that annual partnership. And so, this is a listing of the different meetings that were reported to us and took place or that I participated in. And we also have the Community Advisory Committee, so our special ed voices are represented. So, and our ELACs at a number of our schools. And then, we did have the LCAP survey for staff members, students, parents. We have the NMFT meeting, we had PTAs and PFOs participate. Look at all the school site councils. So proud of all of that hard work and appreciative of that. And then, different leadership teams and of course, student councils and then the Superintendent's Parent Advisory. What we did is stakeholder input forums and we gave people opportunity to tell us, what's working for you and what do you think is a challenge? And we were able to then infer what we needed to focus on and what we needed to continue. And then, we also have the LCAP survey and the analysis is posted to our website. The Spanish version is coming soon, but anyone who's interested can read about the participation and some of the findings. We're really pleased that there were more parents and guardians participating this year than any other year. That's still not a number that we're going to write home about, but we are excited that it's increased. We're excited that there's more staff. We're going to be working on that student participation rate because we do believe that should be at 95%. And that is definitely not 95%. So, where can you find the LCAP? The, on the left, that little box, that's what you see when you go to our website. On the right-hand side, in the quick links, where the fourth button down. I'm thinking, maybe I can get bumped up to the third or the second, but we'll see. And, on the right, yeah, right. On the purple.
Purple.
On the right-hand side, we have questions and input, we have some resources, just how to understand this process. And then, we have the LCAP resources. 19, 20, and 18, 19 are listed below. And then, at the very bottom is a link to all of our prior documentation, so you can see all the LCAPs from the beginning. So, I am pleased to end this portion of the evening. I just wanted to thank my leaders, Russell and John, for being so supportive in this process and for making eye contact. And then, also to our superintendent and his philosophy of supporting all of our students and especially our youngest and neediest. It's been a guiding philosophy for us. And our directors gave a lot of input, our partners in student services are extremely helpful. But most importantly, the fiscal team and Jeff's office, we work nights, we work weekends, we're texting a lot to try and make sure that we're really finding all the money and just making sure that we're in communication about, you know, what are we putting in here and are we feeling very confident about it? So, I think I'm going to turn it over to Jeff so he can explain his piece of the.
In the interest of lack of clarity, if you don't mind, Mr. Trader, I would just like us to address our LCAP questions.
Oh, sure.
Before we go into our budget questions. And Mrs. Snell, you have your light on.
I think you really answered one of my questions, which.
Good job.
On the federal addendum, which is that you're limited on how much you could put in here, but I'll bring it up anyway.
Okay.
Under, this is on your draft, under parent and family engagement, I wondered if under additional activities, you thought, or maybe it's too many words to put in, the Thought Exchange or the Welcome Center? I think the Welcome Center is key for family.
Engagement. But. Yes, we could reiterate that.
I mean, if you have enough words.
We do include in the Title III component, but I could absolutely put it there.
Yes.
Yes, and Thought Exchange, absolutely. I'll check my character count.
And then, what was the other? It seemed, when I read the whole thing, it seems like in some instances, they talk, you talk about Title II funds for English language and then, I'm trying to find that place, Title III. Oh, use some Title III funds for a math elementary teacher.
Yes.
Okay. But then, on another part.
So, we have two math TOSSAs. We have one funded out of Title II.
Okay.
And then, the one that's funded out of Title III is specifically focused on math for English learners.
Oh, okay. Well, that explains that. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, there it is, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, I wanted to know on page 59, I don't know if you have it in front of you.
Are you on the draft or are you in the?
Are you in the big book or the little book?
Yeah.
By big book, it's that big.
It's online. It's part of our.
The draft. The federal draft.
The federal draft or the?
Bring it back up again, though.
59.
Is it this one?
That's the big one. The 324 page, yeah.
That one. Okay. That's different.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I thought it'd be easier. I thought you could just push it by and then get it back on the screen.
Under elementary instructional materials.
Yes.
It looks like budgeted was 20,000 and the estimated actual was 58,000. And it specifically says purchased ancillary materials and replacement texts for wonders and for ELD. And ELD comes under another section, I believe it's like action item number 10. So, $38,000 is a lot over budget. What did we, and I thought, what are the ancillary materials? What does that look like?
So, in our ELD components, there are a number of supports. There's a reader and then there's some work texts. And so, as sometimes happens, if you have to add a class or you change grade levels, then additional materials are ordered. We didn't anticipate that we were going to be ordering that many materials and we happened to buy some more.
Okay. And which TOSA is the one that's paid through the Title II? Is that ELD?
No, no. The Title III is for English learners. So, Title III funds the ELD, TOSA focused on math, and Title II funds the one that's focused on all students.
Okay. And then, for Title III, what specific personnel is, that's the 19.5? How many?
No, those are teachers on special assignment.
It's only the TOSSAs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, 19.5 teachers are funded in two ways.[1720.21]
And then, for Title III, what specific personnel is, that's the 19.5? How many?
No, those are teachers on special assignment.
It's only TOSSAs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, 19.5 teachers are funded in two ways. So, the district funds one per elementary school. Mid-year, we added some to, to schools that didn't have them. So, we started off the year planning on 15 and we ended up the year with all 22. And then, over and above that, because remember, we supplement, we have our Title I funds. And so, from our district reservation, we allocate out Title I-funded 19.5s to our Title I schools according to concentration of poverty and then, size of school. And then, after that, on a sliding scale, then the schools can add on their own site-funded out of Title I 19.5 hourly's.
Okay. Yeah, it just seemed like some of the schools from the LCFF funds, they would maybe have like 9,000 that they would be getting rather than some schools that have like 49. So, even if there's four out of five of the teachers are Title I, like Ray, for instance, has one that is LCFF and the other four are Title I.
They have one LCFF, three Title I district funded, and I believe they fund three on their own. So, they have at least seven 19.5s at Ray.
Right, they, they have five, but four are funded by Title I and they have one that's LCFF. So, if the LCFF funds are supposed to go towards English learners and high-poverty schools, it seems like it would make more sense to add one or two more than have it at a school that maybe has 15 English language learners.
True, but you know what? Those 15 English learners also need the support. And so, what we decided as a district was to make sure that every school had at least one 19.5 hourly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to do equity rather than equally. Okay, so 93. Under Action III History and Social Studies, again, instructional materials for the pilot. Yeah, so it's $20,000 less than budgeted.
So, I have to tell you that $20,000 in the scheme of instructional materials, I know it's a lot in my own personal budget, but things do happen in, in different orders.
Well, it's for substitutes, it's not for materials. So, substitutes under that section.
So, for the history social science, we had two buckets that we thought we were going to draw from. The first one was about the general training that they always get. And then, we also had the instructional materials. So, what we found was, correct me if I'm wrong, that we started off the year planning to do both professional development and the pilot. And what ended up happening is the pilot took over everything. So, the training that they started off, they had some general training and then, after that, the pilot took over what we would have paid for, for other training. And so, I think we've noticed, noted that, saying that the expenditures were in the prior service.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Mrs. Berto?
I just want to make sure that when I see the absenteeism goals, those are related to actual absentee and not tardiness?
Chronic absenteeism? Yes. So, that is measured by whether students are absent more than 10% of the school days or not. And then, and it is an unduplicated number. So, and, and the confusing part about the metric is that even though we would think it would apply K-12 on the dashboard, it's only K-8, I believe. Yeah, it started off a different way.
I'd love to see numbers and not percentages because I know it's like a moving target, but obviously, that doesn't go in here, so at some point.
Talk into your mic a little.
Sorry. I was, I would love to see numbers of absenteeism, not just percentages because I know it's kind of a buried, it's not a true number, like the percentage. When you, when you have a chance.
So, similar to kind of what we had done in some of the plan summary, where in some of the columns, we called out how many students.
Right.
Okay.
Mrs. Flor.
Yeah, thank you. Couple of questions again, thank you so much.
Couple is two.
Yeah, couple is two. I haven't started yet.
No, no, I'm just giving you a hard time. Comic call.
Again, thank you very much for, you know, the entire report.
Oh, my gosh.
The 324, nothing like I like to do on a weekend, spend my time reading a budget book.
And?
An LCFF. And? Oh, an addendum? And we get the pleasure of reading policies, too.
Oh, yeah, we have policies.
It was a fun-filled weekend. I'm particularly interested in the Hanover research. Because, you know, that's a big issue with, with me in terms of getting, getting, getting battle data from our state, our stakeholders. And I'm, I'm happy to see the, the increase, that we have 51% of the respondents were students. Great. 14% were from staff, which is not great. And 35 from a parent or guardian. The question I have, Vanessa, is, is what's the plan to try and increase, continue to increase? Or is that, are we just sort of going to be doing the same thing again next year? Or do you have, are you having conversations about how to do that?
Right, I think that is, you know, the, the magic question, right? How do you either have more people participate in an online survey or how do you have more people come to the things that are offered? I think it's always a challenge and I think that no one way is best. So, we continue to reach out face-to-face, we continue to ask for the school sites to collect, and then, we also continue to do our survey. One of the things I think that was a good move was for us to move it to the January timeframe. And knowing that it won't be changing now, we can advertise so much sooner. And the other thing is that we can support the schools, I think, in getting the word out, but a lot of them did. And we want to make sure that parents are hearing not just from a district email or a district phone call, but from a voice they know. And so, we really want to make sure that we're doing that. And in addition, we're partnering with the CTE office. They have offered to help us with some LCAP videos. And we really feel like video would be a medium that would make a lot of sense so that we could have some short commercials to really show you what Goal One looks like, to show you Goal Seven. And I think that partnering some of the, the video with the Ask to Participate in the Survey would be helpful.
That sounds great.
And my last question. I had two.
You did.
I asked one.
You did.
Now, this is my second.
That's outstanding.
I'm particularly interested, right, in terms of the, the support, the 19.5 teachers, one is paid for by LCAP, my understanding, across, except we, we pick up some of the, the Title, the non-Title I schools, we pick that up and use general fund.
No, so every elementary school has one 19.5 hourly teacher. Some additional schools with higher needs may also have like an aide or a resource, reading resource technician, and those are our elementaries. At the secondary level, the approach we have there is a per pupil allocation. Right? In addition to that, though, recall all the other things that we also do with LCFF, whether it is the additional materials, whether it is additional staffing in other ways, whether it is things like Intervention Compass. So, you have to kind of look at the totality.
My question is, is this. Every school can select how they want to utilize.
Their site money.
Their site money and their, those individuals. I mean, one school may use them to do interventions with small group instruction, may, somebody may do it level, whatever it is. Do we have a process by which we evaluate the effectiveness of that program or using that materials? Because it doesn't, we say that this is what we're doing. The question is, then, we say that we monitor it because it says monitoring, but what does the monitoring and how do we, as a board, evaluate whether that's an effective use of that LCFF funding, even though we don't get it?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. We're still providing that service.
And I, and I think our staff is fabulous and I have no questions about that, but sometimes you want an outside individual, not the OCDE, thank you. But somebody else to come in and validate our findings.
So, two things on the, the teacher piece. Our teachers are evaluated, just like any other teacher. So, they go through an evaluation process at the school site. We also are one of a few amazing districts. We provide induction support to our 19.5s. So, our intervention teachers are also receiving support as new teachers, which makes sense because oftentimes, they end up becoming our teachers. So, so that's an additional layer of support between the evaluation piece. I will also say that I think that our increased effectiveness will be easier to see through the Mr. Elmer Intervention Compass Tool, because we will be able to see the groups of students and we'll be able to look at how are they doing, I think, in a down-to-the-desk level approach like Dr. Navarro has been asking for.
Great.
Thank you. Okay?
Nice job.
Thank you. Sorry, I have another question. Sorry, I was looking at.
Mrs. Yelsey has a light on.
Yeah, I have a question. I just want to thank you not only for this, but also for spending time over the last couple of weeks with all of us.
Oh, yes.
All who wanted.
Yeah.
To go through this entire thing, because I know it is really lengthy. It took you an incredible amount of time, so I appreciate that. And just for the public who may or may not be interested in all of this, but I think it's important to point out the Tier Four money that we're getting.
Title Four.
Title Four money that we're getting that we didn't get in the past.
Yes.
That will be used for Student Services. And I just, I first heard about this when, because I'm on the Mental Health Task Force with Dr. DiAgostino. And I think it's a really important addition in our district because it will be used district-wide for social, emotional, and behavior support. So, I just appreciate having that.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, did you have a question next time? Do your button for me.
Yeah, I did. Did it none?
No.
I did it twice. This is what I was looking for. It was the bottom of that page for foreign language. Page 90, Foreign Language, the Elementary Dual Immersion Programs. It says that we are $20,000, we use $20,000 less than we had budgeted. Is there a reason for that? I feel like that's a large amount and we should have used as much as possible, particularly.
I'm not exactly sure of the cause. Off the top of my head, I have to look into that one.
Okay. One other comment I have is I have a lot of parents who have wanted to look through the whole document and it is not in Spanish. So, this draft version, when will it be available in Spanish?
As soon as we can get it there. We're at 65% translated. So, we're going to do components. I think the annual update will be the first one to come on up. And then, after that, we'll see if it's going to be the first segment or the last. It's quite an intensive process.
Yeah, I, because if we're having a public hearing and we have a lot of Spanish-speaking parents, they cannot be a part of the process and actually ask really end-up questions without that document. So, I think for next year, I would like to have a start that, the process of starting translation a bit earlier, like draft number one. And then, I was wondering if we can do something more like, some of the districts have infographics that would be super helpful, that has the numbers, it has the goals, it's trackable over three years and it's like.
That's the Gobo product?
Ten. I don't, this was actually, someone gave this to me and Santa Ana has them dual language. They sent it to my house and I'm not in Santa Ana and I was like, how helpful. So, I, I just think we're really focusing on family engagement. So, to make this process a much easier and more understandable one would be amazing.
I think it's a great idea. I will tell you that my priority is the video because I actually think more people would be looking to that, but we'll definitely do everything we can.
Videos and infographics.
I will work on both.
Thank you.
Mrs. Flor.
Vanessa, when you go out to classrooms and schools and meet with families or they are, are English language advisor, ELAC, which are school-based and D-LAC, which are, do you take the, the, do you take this document with you?
So, we use the LCAP Federal Addendum with our Superintendent's Parent Advisory and with our D-LAC. Our parents are pretty much only interested in, they're, they're interested in many things. What they want to know is what's happening at their school site. So, we've tried not to subsume the majority of the ELAC time on things like that. Typically, the parents are providing input on the program at their school site. So, we're not bringing the LCAP Federal Addendum in front of them. But with the D-LAC, we have the, the document, the, that has the Title IV and Title III and Title II. And so, we have all of those components.
But you ensure that each school in their ELAC are, you're answering the questions that pertain to this document to them, that they're most concerned about, as you said, their school, their students, their programs in that school. And the assumption is that not only your office, but the teachers at that school, the administrators at that school, the principal at that school, the PTAs at that school are also working to help them understand this process. Is that correct?
Yes, well, what we're really trying to, to communicate is that the site-level program is the program and that from those site-level programs, we will take our cue and vice versa. But, you know, parents want to see what's happening at their school site. So, we want to reinforce and respect that because it is very challenging. There's not a lot of time in the ELAC meetings, but we provide the forums and we ask the questions. And that's why we focus on the successes and the challenges, because we think that resonates at both the site level and at the district level.
And School Smarts and PK, which is Parent Institute for Quality Education, also provide that baseline of information of how to be getting involved and provide that information as well, correct?
Yes, and with School Smarts, they develop an action plan. And with PK, I think it's just more about that educational system. They, they both serve different purposes and they're, they're both equally important. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
No. Yeah. Done with one big piece of paper, bring up another big piece of paper.
A big book.
It's a big book. But it's fun reading.
Pleasure reading.
It actually is.
It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I hope, you know, the volume of the LCAP is, is something I hope that we can get past and that you, you know, Vanessa has really, with the leadership of Dr. Navarro, really moved us beyond compliance in, in regard to the LCAP. And, and you can be assured that that, just that whole process has helped us to really dial in on using our categorical funding, just maximizing it. And so, it's, it's been a great process and it's, I think it's been super helpful and Vanessa's been just absolutely terrific in moving us that direction. So, with the all-funds budget, this is something that we do every year and you have to adopt a budget before June 30th. And that's a legal requirement. And then, of course, we have some revisions that we take first and second interims. And so, we'll start with the big picture here. Assessed valuation, that's how essentially this district is funded, being community-funded. It's funded based on assessed valuation for property. And you see there, that's a very nice line up and to the right. And you have done this. And have a number of projects going on in the district, some of that funded by general obligation bonds. And so, in 2017, you refinanced some bonds and achieved $140 million of savings. And then, in 2019, you achieved 7% savings and issued an additional, about $28 million of bonds for some additional facility projects, mostly for Estancia High School, the theater there. And you've done that and been able to maintain the third-lowest bond burden in the county.
Yay.
So, that's quite an accomplishment. And your credit rating, part of why you can do that, because you can go to the market and you can get low interest rates because of your credit rating. And that's because of your willingness to make difficult decisions that produce a prudent result. And, and that comes at a, with a lot of effort. Only a handful of districts in the county, in, in the state, in the state have this kind of credit rating. So, you should feel very good about that. So, let's talk a little bit about then, about your revenues. And they have been resilient here in the, in the most recent history. When we look at the components, you have what's driving everything and that's property taxes. And so, you can see property taxes are moving. At a nice clip there. That's a nice clip. And then, if you see here, next coming in, state aid. State aid is, is generally the same thing. It's just the basic aid guarantee that the state provides us, which is about $7.6 million a year. And then, on top of that, there's other state. And other state revenues, that includes things that are like mandated cost, lottery. I can't read my writing there. Something else.
I'll have to talk to your third-grade teacher.
And then, other federal dollars, of course, Title I, Title III, and the new Title IV money that we're getting, which is going to be very helpful. And then, we have other local. Another local, this is a very generous community and you'll notice that those, those sizes are about the same size as the federal program. And so, other local is a, it's a great compliment that our community has confidence in being able to help, help our district in that regard from a financial standpoint. So, that's the good news. Now, here's some of the challenges that we're having. And, and one, let's look at that. Now, that's a, a revenue line. That's a nice line. It's up and to the right and it, it seems to be, that's the good news. However, we are, we are challenged and we're challenged by the expense line. And so, when you overlay that expense line, you can see there that, that in through 1516 and 1617, we're doing okay, but 1718, we, we exceeded our revenues. 1516, 1617, we were doing okay, but 1718, we, we exceeded our revenues. And that was a conscious decision because you, you have about $80 million of facility projects in the oven. And you obligated, you, you made a promise to the community that those were going to get done. And so, we wanted to put that money in a lockbox and get them done, and so, that's what we've done. But you see going forward, we're struggling to maintain that, keep that line below the revenue, our expenditures below revenue. And so, but you have a lot going on. You got textbook, you got two textbooks, textbook adoptions, you're going to spend more on instructional materials than you ever have in the history of this district next year by a large margin. And so, the other challenge that we have are pension costs. When you look at pension rates, Calsters, or I'm sorry, Calpers, there's just seems to be no end in sight to the increases there. This is substantial. It's 85% of your budget is salaries. And so, when you add this kind of benefit that's just driven off salaries, this is a substantial challenge. And then, of course, we have Calsters and we're getting some, it looks like some relief from the state on Calsters, which is very welcome. We appreciate that relief and we, we appreciate the governor recognizing that this is a substantial challenge for districts around the state. And then, when you look at though, our, the growth in dollars, you can see there's a steady incline in dollars in 1516, you know, of about 1617 million, and we're going to climb all the way, almost to $35 million in just pension costs. And as a percent of budget, back in 1516, we're just over 6% and we're going to climb to just over, just about 10% of our budget. And, and that means other things are going to have to shift to make room for that because that, that pie isn't, you know, getting tremendously bigger. This, this is happening because pensions, pension costs are growing faster than our budget is growing. And so, then, one of the things, when the charter school was adopted, one of the things that you could not evaluate was, or taken to consideration by law, was the financial impact of, of charters. And so, when we look now, we can look at that financial impact, very minimal impact in the previous years, you can see there, 1819 kind of climbing, but 1920, it's going to be a substantial impact, over $2 million in a reduction of revenue for charter schools. That's something that we're struggling with, trying to figure that out and, and make sure that we can move forward. So, there's some substantial challenges that we're, we're struggling with. Another challenge that we have is other post-employment benefits. Other post-employment benefits are essentially health and welfare and those are obligations that we have made to our employees who retire, eligible employees who retire between the ages of 55 and 65, that we will cover their health and welfare. Due to changes in the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, they've made some changes in how we're supposed to evaluate that, how we're supposed to value that. And, and as a result of those changes, our liability has gone from $40 million to $120 million overnight, overnight. And so, we look forward to bringing to you some recommendations very soon. Right now, we're evaluating some OPEB trusts, Section 115 trusts, that we can utilize to help fund that liability and actually, in the long run, lower the cost by doing that. And so, we look forward to doing that very soon to bring you some recommendations on that. So, with that then, our objective here in the 1920 budget is to stabilize the reserves and to put them back to where they really need to be. So, we've, you know, we climbed up there, up through 1516 and took a little nosedive here through 1718 and we're hoping here, 1819, we're stabilizing a little bit and we want to keep that stable. And so, with that then, we recommend approval with a positive certification of the 1920 budget.
Um, Miss, thank you so very much. Ms. Anderson.
My question was just, do we need to do public comment for LCAP? Are we separating them out?
I am separating them out, but since we had these two reports, I only had one on LCAP. So, I was going to do it before, or during the hearing time, isn't that, yeah. We'll have the hearings, which is part, starts at 18B, but I did have an 18A question, but it was, I don't know whether it was on LCAP or budget, but I'm putting it when the hearing starts.
Okay.
Was that it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Flore.
A couple of things. One is you, our enrollment is trending down and you didn't show that slide. So, the, I guess it's, if our enrollment is slowing down, maybe this is for these guys too, is that our employee costs are rising, our pension, but doesn't it make sense that if our enrollment is decreasing, where do we get, is there any savings because we have, we need less employees or is it because we make the commitment for no, so that we sort of eat that decline in enrollment because we make a commitment to funding PE specialists, music specialists, science specialists and-
No combo classes.
No combo classes. Is that, is that, is that the reason why, even though our enrollment is trending down and it looks like we've lost since, in the last eight years, we've lost close to 2,000 students, which is not unusual in terms of the state, the whole state is-
The whole state is losing.
The whole state is declining enrollment. But we're not making, have we made significant reductions in terms of the number of employees? Or, I don't see we have, have we? I don't think, I don't see we did.
Not, not in 1819, no. We, we didn't make any changes, really essentially in staffing in 1819. Now, there probably will be some savings in, in 1920, as we, you know, see what enrollment's going to do and also what the charter's going to do, so.
Okay. We're being very conservative right now till we know what's happening.
That's right. We really don't know what's happening, but there, essentially, yes, there could be some savings.
Okay. Just curious. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. And we had the readout for that. We have comments, I'm taking them in, according to the ABs.
I have some questions about the budget.
Well, then, push your button.
Push it.
Ms. Anderson.
I wanted to ask, so-
You're back up, Mr. Traitor.
I noticed in other budget years, there were other funds, like Fund 14 for deferred maintenance, there was Fund 23 and 24, which were Measure F. I don't see those in this budget. Where did deferred maintenance go? Does that, did that go to operations? Where is that?
That's very astute. That's a great observation. The, the state eliminated Fund 14 essentially, and so, what happened is that, that Fund 14 is used for routine restricted maintenance, major maintenance kinds of things. And so, that got subsumed into, into the general fund as restricted, restricted money. So, you'll see that in the general fund on the restricted side now.
Okay.
So, that Fund 14 is over. And then, 23 and 24, those are general obligation bonds that are associated mainly with Measure A and we've kind of finished all that out and so.
Well, Measure A was a different one. 23 and 24 were specifically for Measure F.
And, and-
I think was 23 for Measure A, but 24, it looked like, I was looking at, I had a budget from 2014, 15 and it had them under Measure F and Measure A was a totally different number. It was like 28, it was a different number.
Yeah, and, and we, we segregate that money and so, a lot of Measure F projects have been completed and so, that money's gone. So, you, so we didn't, we just took that fund out because there was no activity in that fund.
Measure A, you mean?
Right. So, but I would like to see in this budget, what the current status is of Measure F. I know we were going to have a Citizens Oversight Report on it and we're not having that until next meeting, but I think in this, when we're having all the different funds, I would like to see it included, if possible.
Yeah, and, and there is, there should be, is there not a fund, actually, 20, no, that's, no. There, I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
Thank you, that's a great question.
And then, I had another question about Fund 17, my favorite Fund 17. It currently has $14 million in it, the Irvine Company money. It's supposed to not be used for capital outlay, it's supposed to be used in classrooms, is my understanding. It looks like we haven't used it in quite a while.
Prevented from?
Or, is there, do we have like a five, could I get like a five-year, like, we, we took out, it looked like on there, there was some money from, from the general fund that was put in this year? I just am very concerned about Fund 17, if we have schools that are doing fundraisers literally every single week to raise $2,000 and we're sitting on $4 million.
Could I explain that?
Yes.
That, that, that fund is restricted from the standpoint of what, how much we can spend, take out of it. It was established by Don Bren and the Irvine Company and there were very specific guidelines in terms of what-
Oh, yeah.
-could be removed and what we could use it for. There were times when we had the bankruptcy that we actually borrowed money from it to do, to do lighting. But it is for educational enhancements, it's not for routine and we can only take, it's the interest, one, it's like 1%, whatever it is, we can't take a whole bunch of money out of every year. He wanted, Don Bren and the Irvine Company were very specific that that money was to be used, only the interest and so that it would not be, we would not be spending on everything.
And I have a question on that because I know at one point, some of the-
Money was in for the science, was the science.
That's right, we used it for science.
It was, thank you, it was for our science labs to be built. That was one of the big things. And it was also at one point, if I thought, it was for schools that used to be part of the Irvine Ranch, so that limited some of it.
It looks like we annexed a property. My concern is we are, we are literally like trying to find all these hourly employees and trying to scramble and find all this money. And it has on page 95, secondary school computer aids, other educational enhancements, these are things that has been used for in the past. School telecommunications, school energy conservation, library automation, technology master planning, staff development for new teachers, strategic planning and miscellaneous. I would like to see some of this money, even if it's 1%, even if it's the interest, some of it going back into our classrooms.
It may not be able to. So, we'll have to find out what it's, what the actual contract.
From my understanding, it is, it is unrestricted, so I-
It is not, it is restricted funds.
We need more information on this?
It is, it is restricted and part of what they wanted to do is maintain the purchasing power of that fund. And because the rates have been so low, we have not made any withdrawals from that fund in, in the most recent history.
And we typically don't buy people with money that we can't count on because once you've paid for peep, we, we used to laugh and say, you can't buy anything that eats because once you've hired someone, you're obligated to pay for that person once they become a permanent employee. So, I'm just-
Well, secondary school computer aids, that's a person.
You're right.
And for me, it's really, well, it's really concerning that we have all this money and it's growing and growing and we, like, we have some school sites that would love to have a licensed clinical social worker that can do psychology and social work. That's one person that would be able to fulfill two roles. Some of these things, like, we need this at our Title I schools and the Title I funds are already maxed out. So, I would like us to-
Perhaps I could help.
Have some more discussions as to putting this back in classrooms.
Perhaps I could help. I think what it sounds like is, because this is a restricted, highly restrictive fund, that I'm going to ask Jeff to go back and do the homework on it and what the regulations are and we'll share that with the board on a, on a memo, okay? And then, we, Jeff can explain where, where we might be able to use it, if we can use any of it, depending on what the guidelines were. It is money that was given to us, so there were some restrictions placed on it and I know we have used it for science. But we'll have to come back and give you some more homework, I mean, give us some time to do homework. And so, these are the kinds of questions that really, we need to go back and, and research more deeply.
Well, I think part of it is the, the original $5 million that came from the Irvine Company was in exchange for expansion of Fashion Island, to be real, let's be real clear. It was an exchange because they were going to have to pay us money in terms of through the-
Development.
The development fees. They gave us a $5 million endowment for that and it was to be used strictly for educational enhancements and that was back in 1997. And that was negotiated, but he was very clear about only, spending only the interest and it was like 1%. But at that time, we were getting, what, 7%?
Correct.
I mean, it was a huge amount of money.
Yeah, the interest rate has gotten so low that we, we haven't dared touch it.
You haven't been able to, we haven't been able to pull anything out.
Right.
After that, then an additional, when Serene Stokes was on the board, she also worked to get an additional $1 million, which funded the science, for all the science, for all the elementary schools. And that was placed in and they paid that off. It was a million dollars over, was it five years or two, twice?
I want to say it was two, but.
It's on, it's on there.
Yeah, so, that's what, but that, we haven't been taking, those programs, right, that you see here are actually programs that we haven't taken a lot of, we haven't taken money out because it's earning one, less than 1%.
That's correct.
And we can only spend the interest.
We can only spend the interest. So, it's growing, but, and if we want to negotiate, we'd have to negotiate and change the terms of the agreement with the Irvine Company.
Again, let, let us go back and review all the documents and give you an informational memo on that.
Good. Mrs. Bartow.
Along with your research about the fiscal prudence of using it or if we're allowed to or whatever, could you add in there why we transferred $1 million from the general fund in 2016?
What page?
Page 96.
So, we're following along?
From Fund 17? Which fund are we talking about?
On Fund 17, page 96, we transferred $1 million. The part of the, when you look at the growth, it looks like it had quite a bit of growth, but on further review, the 2016 to the 2019 growth, a million of that is not from interest, about 289 of it, 189,000 of it is from interest. But we did transfer $1 million from the general fund into that fund.
That's correct.
So, just, and just for research, I guess, if you know why, great, but otherwise, I'd like to know.
Yeah, that, I think we, in, in a year before, I'll have to go back and do the research, but a, a couple of years before, we used some Fund 17 money on some extra kinds of things and this was the payback for that.
Okay.
And so, we did it, we did a, we did a payback on that, but I'll get you the detail on that.
Yeah, just, that makes sense. Thank you. Mrs. Black, I see you.
Okay.
But there were people before you.
I know, I just.
We're tickets, I know, it didn't work before. We got it. Mrs. Black.
Oh, I had my question.
Oh, cool. Back to Ms. Anderson.
Oh, did you have one?
No.
Oh. On the student, on the school pages where it has everything divided up, which I love and I've been researching these for several years, it doesn't have the LCFF where the money is allocated. So, for all of the other sections, it says if it goes to certificated salary, classified benefits, supplies, services, capital. I would like to see, I know it's a very tight space, but where that individual schools' LCFF funds went because it's just kind of floating.
Yeah, we can, we can pull that apart.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Matoy, excuse me, one quick second.
Sure, Ms. Black.
Back to a question that Ms. Anderson asked a little while ago. Ms. Anderson, on page 99, you'll see building fund, Fund 21 is the repository of the Measure F funds. So, on pages 99 and 100 is Measure F.
There you go. Okay, now, hold on while I find my papers. We'll start with Elena Perez. And I'm sorry, I should have called you when the LCAP was on because that's what-
Oh, that's fine. So, hi, honorable, honorable presidents and members of the school board and Dr. Navarro. My name is Elena Perez and I have a student at Real Elementary School in 4th grade and also my son, Manuel Chavez, he created from Pomona, Ray, Chihuahua and Estancia and Yusa Irvine. And I'm so proud of him, he serves our community as Costa Mesa Council member for District 4. And a parent at Real Elementary School, I would like have an LCAP to, to Real Elementary School so our students, they can, they can be able to speak English and Spanish with the parent, they communicate with the, with her parents, like a lot of parents, they don't speak English and also her grandparents. So, I have a this form, this for LCAP, so more than 26 signatures, so we can request for this program.
Oh, for an ELD program?
Yeah, so-
Thank you. You can turn it in, right?
And thank you so much.
Nope, thank you, Ms. Perez. It will go to the ELD department and they will take care of that. Thank you. Now, we're going to 18B, Mr. Dr. Dowdy. Mr. Doctor, sorry. You can open up the public hearing after I hear this.
Good evening, President Matoy, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the community and the cabinet. I'm Brett Dowdy, I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. So, I have a couple of budget questions.
Can I ask you?
Yes.
I'm going to ask for a point-of-order question. Should I have opened up the hearing and then let Dr. Dowdy talk or should I have just gotten discussion?
gotten discussion?
Well, you should've opened the hearing, but-
You should've opened the hearing. Can you let me open the hearing?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I opened the hearing, it's 8:10. Dr. Doughty, would you like to speak to number 18B? Thank you.
Yes, I would. So, a couple of questions. First off, I do want to commend Mr. Trader and his staff. They are among the best when it comes to financial analysis. And what I have noted is that they, that our district has consistently had good stewardship of the funds, in terms of, the projections are always done conservatively. There's just a little, you know, 98 or 99% accurate when you finish the year. So there's always a little bit left over, because he plans for a little bit less revenue than what really comes in, and we always underspend by just a little bit. So there's always some leftover money at the end of each fiscal year. So my question is, how does that money then get used? Does it go into a special fund, and then gets applied the next year? Is it going into a special fund, that then the board uses for special projects, like some of the facilities projects that you're doing currently? So, just what is that, what is that system? So if that could be explained? Because, you know, from year to year, it might be $2 million, or it might be $10 million. And so, it might fluctuate, and it might look like some large numbers. The second question that I have is regarding the stabilization fund that Mr. Trader described. And it was, the bar chart was kind of flat, and then it went up, and then it went down, and then it went kind of flat. So, is there a long-term goal, either as a dollar number, here's kind of where we want the stabilization fund to stay, long-term, or a percentage of the overall budget? How can we communicate what that goal is, for where we want to maintain the stabilization fund?
Is there, do we actually have a stabilization fund? Yeah, we do, but, oh, thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff. So, the board has given direction to have what's called reserve for economic uncertainty, and that's 4.5%. The state requires 3, but we have 4.5%. Part of that reason is because we are community-funded. So if there were a disaster, or any kind of, you know, property values could dramatically decrease, we have no, no support from the state in that regard. We could, we could actually be in a downfall of $100 million before the state would kick in.
I'd also like to add that when, and those of you that have been board presidents, get the letter from the county, and they always recommend that we continue to increase that amount, because we are-
Yes.
... basic aid, or are property, community-funded.
In addition-
Say, I would say, you know, that we are not ADA. So ADA is average daily attendance. So we are solely funded on our tax, property taxes. And then we get about $11 million from the state, and $7 million from the feds, that's it. And, and we have 85% of a $300 million budget, plus another, oh, well, now it's gonna be 20%, not to mention, you know, for benefits. So that puts us at 95% of our income, you know, is now going just for salary and benefits. So, I think we need to be clear about, you know, instead of throwing these acronyms around, is that we aren't paid like a Huntington Beach, or Santa Ana, or Capistrana. We are paid solely based on our, you know, property tax base, which is great, because it gives us local control. And I think that's why we are doing such a great job. And I'm sorry to pontificate, but, it, you know, I really, I think it's important that the public and our employees understand that, that we, you know, knock on wood, are very vulnerable. You know, one catastrophic earthquake, and, you know, it's, we're on our own. We, you know, we have to do it. And, and I commend Jeff and his staff, and Dr. Navarro, for, and, you know, all the employees, everybody's participating, make sure that we're, you know, prepared. And I feel confident we are as prepared as we can be for the unknown. And student, you know, success is our main, you know, and safety is our main concern. So that's our focus. Sorry.
It's a wonderful point, Mrs. Black makes, in that we are on our own. It is about our property taxes, we're community-funded, and so, the state isn't gonna save us if something happens.
Could you address the carryover question?
Yes, and let me finish the other question, too. So you, there's two pieces to your stabilization strategy, and, and that is, one, you set a 4.5% for reserve for economic uncertainties. And then you have another stabilization fund in the general fund, which is about $15 million. And that's where we were trying to get to, to get to that level. And so, we, the board hasn't given any specific direction regarding that, other than to just have enough to be able to manage our cash flow needs, those kinds of things. Because we do, we go revenue dry between July and December. And so, we end up, the general fund actually doesn't have enough money to get us through that period. And so, we have to borrow from other funds. And so, the key is, we do need to keep a stabilization amount in the general fund, just to, to help us through the cash dry periods. Now, the question regarding transfers at the end of the year. So yes, well, we'll, we have what's called, what you've seen in the budget book is, is an estimated actual. That's how much we estimate that we're gonna end the year with. There might be variance in that regard. We may end up the year with a little bit more money than we had, had anticipated. And in those cases, then, it is possible for us to look at, see what the facility projects that we have obligated ourselves to, there might be a transfer out to Fund 40, for example, to help fund those projects. But, that should not be a tremendous amount of money. There, you know, it should be within a few million, a few million. And on a three, I know it seems like a lot, but on a-
I know, it's like our own family personal budget.
On a $320 million budget, it's really not a whole lot.
Not enough to sustain for more than a couple days, really.
Correct.
Thank you for addressing those points. So, Jeff, I guess one of the questions is, for the public, is that how are we funding our air conditioning? You mentioned an $80 million, I mean, we've got $80 million worth of projects coming up. We've got a pool, we've got fencing, we've got a theater- We've got fields. We've got fields, we've got air conditioning, we've got seven. Where, where are you, where are you pulling that money out of?
So, much of that is being funded just out of your general fund, unrestricted property tax dollars. Then there's some that's being funded out of general obligation bonds. There's some that's being funded out of redevelopment money, that you received when Governor Brown shut down redevelopment agencies. So it's a mix of funding, but it's primarily unrestricted funding that's moving, moving that.
So, basically, when we adopt a, we did two, we did two large curricular adoptions this year.
Correct.
Which is kind of, which is unusual for a district to adopt two in one year, purchasing all that, that money, that's again, but those are, those are what this board decides on where the priorities are. And at that, at the time, two years ago, or three years ago, the board prioritized and said, air conditioning is the number one. I mean, we're gonna spend as much as it takes to get air conditioning in all of the buildings. Two, we, we made the commitment to, to look at our textbook adoptions. So, other things that we may have on an individual site basis, that we would really want for our individual sites, i.e. Costa Mesa wants their, you want your team rooms. Oh, I do want that. You want the team rooms, or, you know, those individual, those individual, the board has to come to a decision on where those priorities are.
Correct.
Where to spend that, where to spend that money.
We get in line with that.
And we just don't have, it just does, we have these funds, the funds are actually restricted funds. And we have made a commitment to put in 4% every year into the facilities and maintenance, correct?
That's, yes, you maintain your facilities with 4% of your general fund expenditures plus transfers out. And, and so, we, we take that high-level direction, and, and we wanna make sure that, that that's gonna come to fruition, and that's why you saw a dip in reserves recently in the, in the last couple of years, because we wanted to make sure that, that that would happen, that we had the money, the backing to make that happen. And now that we're coming down to the end of air conditioning, you'll see that reserves will stabilize.
Also, on item 18B, Wendy Lees. Your two had fun reading.
I love budgets. I'm not too good on the LCAP, though. But, good evening, Madam President, and members of the school board, and Dr. Navarro, my name is Wendy Lees. I come to you as a taxpayer. A grandmother, a mother of five, who all attended Newport Mesa schools at various times. But now, I'm kind of looking at the overview of, and I see where for three years in a row, you have the same Newport Mesa district priorities. Haven't changed a word. But I like the one where it says C, A, B, C, community. And I'm a community partner. I'm a stakeholder. Now, I'm kind of rare, because I'm a teacher, and I'm still teaching, and I'm still involved in education, as it has transformed and evolved in the last, well, when I first got involved in the 80s. So, my concern tonight is several things. That with your warnings, one, well, the charter, the pensions, the instructional materials, the costs associated, the OPEPs, but also your declining enrollment. So this is where I'm coming from. I believe, because I live near Victoria, and now I live near Whittier, that, that our neighborhood schools are really the strength in our communities, and in our neighborhoods, that they, kids go to school, they play with each other after school. But I see with the declining enrollment, and Mr. Trader does an excellent job in being very clear, some of the empty nesters and the trends, but I think a lot of people are leaving Newport Mesa for other reasons. Because the board and your public engagement is somewhat lacking. We saw that in the districting, that there were not really good PR notices getting everybody out. It wasn't really well-intended. And also, recently with the task force and the human relations, there were no press releases. In other words, you mentioned the community wanting the different things that's in the LCAP, too, the same priorities, but I would like to see you more involved in community engagement. You listen to people on the air conditioners, that's wonderful, and on the safety, too. But I think in, in what, you need to do an exit study on why people leave Newport Mesa, and find out what the real truth is. What are, what's lacking? Where are, why are people leaving? Is it the math curriculum? Is it that the test scores don't, you know, in that particular neighborhood, the people don't wanna buy a house there, and so they, they move to Irvine? So, just have a study session. I think this is way too much information to have in one meeting. I think you should have two, maybe three separate meetings and study sessions, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next comment is on 18C.
Before we leave that one, I just wanna remind the board that there are guidelines as to when we can have the public hearing of the LCAP and the, and the budget, and then when you can have the approval of the budget.
Oh, right.
So there are some timelines that we have no control over. So it's not that you have all that time. There could only be so much time between the two.
Correct. Okay. I was, ready. Okay, I close the hearing for item 18B, and open the hearing for item 18C. Ooh, I looked so fast, the number didn't even change. Mrs. Roberts. And this was where I should've put Mrs. Perez, but we had letters mixed up.
I'm gonna get situated for a second, sorry.
It's your time.
It's a lot of stuff, I'm sure. Everyone can agree to that. Okay, good evening, members of the board. My name is Erica Roberts. I've been coming here for quite a few years, and staying late into these meetings. A few suggestions I would make for the community, if everyone can have a show of hands, who understands the LCAP after that presentation? Like, fully understands it? Okay, so we got more information on the LCAP than any school site council ever will, and nobody understands it. I actually was on school site council, and we would get an agenda, and we would vote on that. We never saw the packet of the LCAP. This is what it looks like, this thick binder. In 2014, you guys were talking about how are we gonna save money and use the money for the right places. Parent input was brought up. I have been saying for at least two years, please use PTA presidents, room moms, and principals. Do not send out information from people at the district that nobody knows. It is a big fat delete. We do not need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on these surveys. You have executives that are very smart, they can figure it out. Get to the schools and do surveys, engage people. Vanessa called it the magic question survey. There is no magic question. Here is the public hearing request to come tonight. And basically, it says, please come, you can look at the materials at the district office. You want our kids to be in the 21st century? Send a live link, be ready for us to look at it. It's 300 pages long. No one understands it here after this meeting. 300 pages, the phone number's wrong, there is no email, and there's no link, and there's no Spanish. But you want us to understand this? And, I would, I would challenge each of you to go to schools and talk to the school site council members, and find out, because they're checking off they understand it, just like I had to, who actually understands it. The videos, videos have been out at Irvine on their website forever. It's not a new idea. I got this off of Irvine, and that's how I educated myself about it two years ago. There's so much. Basically, I want to say that I sat on the school site council, people don't understand it, we are missing the boat here. In 2014, the LCAP listed SWAN math as a curriculum, Dr. Navarro. I want you to look at me. You told us it was a supplement. It's in the LCAP as a curriculum, at school site councils, where, on the site plans, it's listed as something else. If you look at the 2014 LCAP, it says SWAN math is a curriculum. Then there's also goals on the, on the LCAP. 80% of the students were supposed to be passing those benchmark tests. That never happened. Your job, and the community's job, is to say, okay, that's not happening, we're way off the mark, and you're supposed to take our money and use it for something else, or investigate. That never happened. I have a whole speech ready, but what basically happened is, Dr. Navarro-
I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Roberts. All right, having no other cards on the subject, I close the hearing on 18C. I have to ask a question, Dr. Jocum. On 18D, are you going to speak to it before we?
Okay.
Okay, in that case, I need a break. So, therefore, we get to have a break. It's like, the one tiny little power thing I have. It's 8:29, we'll be back at 8:35. Six minutes, thank you.
Six minutes.
All righty, parents, we're gonna start up again, please, audience? Thank you. Dr. Jocum?
Thank you, President Matoye. I just wanna set a little bit of context for the public hearing on the annual SELPA service plan and the annual SELPA budget plan. Plus, I wanted to show off my lovely corsage as a member of the prom party with Vanessa and Jeff, although I do feel a little bit like their prom chaperone instead of their co-date here. We, every year, as a single district SELPA, Special Education Local Plan Agency, we are required to submit to the state an annual service plan and an annual budget plan. And they are primarily intended for multi-district SELPAs, so that each district understands what services are provided by which district, and how the funds from the SELPA are distributed to the district. So it looks a little bit different- So it looks a little bit different as a single district SELPA because we get all the money and it's just used for our kids. With that said, we meet with our Special Education Community Advisory Committee, we go over the annual service plan with them, we go over the annual budget plan with them. Jeff was with me this year when we did it to answer any questions and move forward. So we feel like we've kind of vetted it through them and they are also in the process of changing some of these for next year. And once they are updated and changed, we plan to put them on our website and have them a little bit more accessible. But right now, they're, they don't make a lot of sense out of context.
Thank you. So that was our explanation and I open the hearing on our SELPA service plan. I don't have any cards on it. Board members, do we have any questions? Well, this is.
Mrs. Anderson.
Oh, Ms. Anderson, thank you.
I just wanted to check and see.
Oops, mic. Thank you.
On page 19, it talks about the preschools and I know we have Head Start and at the bottom it had codes for Head Start. Is that, is Head Start not on there because it's not essentially through us or do we put it because it's still on the Ray campus?
It's not, we don't provide that program. So these are programs that we either have students in that are special ed. So you'll see some private preschools as well. So it's wherever we have students. So we wouldn't list it if we don't have current students with IEPs attending.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? All righty, I'm closing the hearing. Thank you. And for public edification, we don't vote tonight by state code. We must wait till the next board meeting to act on these things. Thank you. All righty, discussion, action, calendar. Oh, Mr. Trader, you're up again. 19A.
You'll remember back at the height of the recession, there was a proposition to, for taxes, so to help avoid a reduction in education dollars. And the voters approved that. And as a result of that, the governor created what's called the Education Protection Account, the EPA account. And so money flows into this account. It's about $4,075,000 for this district and it can only be spent on instructional kinds of things, not administration, anything like that. And so here you're just taking, you are taking action, indicating that that's what we are doing with the money. We're spending it on instruction. We place this on our website and you can see where the money is going and how we're spending that in compliance with the EPA account.
Move adoption of Resolution 250619, Education Protection Account Expenditure Determination. Second. It was moved by Mrs. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. Do we have any discussion? Yes, we do. There's Mrs. Bartow.
So for clarification, it's pretty clear. The certificated salaries are one line, employee benefits are another. And just to clarify, administrative in this context doesn't mean, you know, it means principals or things like that. What is the loss, the, shall not be used for the salaries and benefits of administrators or any other administrative costs. So I just wanted to make sure that I understand the distinction.
That's a great question. The accounting manual for the state puts things by function. And so there's an O1 function, which is instruction, and then there's a few administrator functions, which would be like O9 for a school or 39 for district administration. The only thing that's in this fund is O1, that would be instruction, and that would be compliant with EPA.
Good question. Any other questions, comments? This is a resolution, is that a roll call vote? Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Okay, 7-0, thank you. Mr. Drake, item 19B.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Matoye. So I'm really excited to share with you tonight and ask for you to take action on Intervention Compass, otherwise known affectionately in the district as Mr. Elmer. About three or four years ago, Dr. Navarro came to us and had services and was really adamant about finding a tool that could get information down to the teacher's desk so that they could immediately and quickly, you know, support students' needs within their classroom. So George Knights and his crew really set out to find that tool and they started working with Intervention Compass about three and a half years ago, really to create it. Intervention Compass came to them with, you know, some of the tool and then George worked with a small coalition of principals to really refine it and work closely with Intervention Compass to really create this tool that takes all the bits and pieces of information that are in different areas of our, of our systems and bring them together. A lot of principals in the past, Ms. Matoye, you'll recognize this, spent hours creating by hand different spreadsheets and so forth that they could use after the fact. And we want, you know, in the moment, information to, to support kids. And so over the past three years, George Knights and principals have really, like I said, perfected this tool or to the point of where we're ready to go wall-to-wall with it. Several more schools have been brought into the loop this year to utilize it and we're in front of you this evening to ask for your approval for a contract to move Mr. Elmer Intervention Compass into every one of our schools. We can show you a, I'm going to ask Ms. Galey to come up, who's never been able to pass up a really good spreadsheet and share just a few samples of what Mr. Elmer will look like for us.
We need to knock on the door and let them know.
Yes, we should. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So George couldn't be here this evening, he's also celebrating some graduation festivities, so we wish him well. But I've been along for the journey alongside him. He's been keeping me informed along the way and I was always in his ear saying, I really want to be able to use this for reclassification purposes, George, please, because we live in a land of a lot of spreadsheets where we send out spreadsheets to our EL coordinators and we're asking, what we wanted was something more live. And meanwhile, we were also really trying to find a way to monitor the interventions that are happening at our schools and to group them and to see how are the kids really doing. And what's beautiful about the system is it has live data. It speaks to the other systems that we have. And then you are able to take some pre-built walls, but you can also then build off the walls that are there and create more of your own. So this allows you to pull multiple data points into one spot, but really the beauty is you can also sort and filter. It can be at the teacher level, it can be at the grade level. So if you're trying to do grade level intervention as a principal, that's a really handy thing rather than having to go teacher by teacher and create multiple different reports. And so it is true, the principals were really asking for some support because they had various iterations of spreadsheets, but it's difficult to get that live data. The minute that you've pulled it and put it into a spreadsheet and had your data chat, then you get new rounds of data. So trying to keep that live as well as students get reclassified, so you want to see what status they have or what the special ed status is. So this is an example of one of the walls. It's for third grade reading and this group is all students. So if you could see my screen, it would have a list of about 90 third graders all the way down. So we sorted it according to their star reading level. So gosh, there's a third grader reading at a 6.9 level at Ray Elementary. I think that's a really thing to celebrate. So what you can do is you can start to look and see if there are some patterns. So this would obviously not be my intervention group, right? But I would go the other direction and I would see, okay, what patterns am I noticing? Where, where should we be really making sure that we're targeting our different resources? So it's useful in that regard. This sheet is a specific focus on English learners and this is a wall for our English Language Proficiency Acquisition in California. That's our assessment that we have. And so what we started off with on the left-hand side is our fifth grade students, and this is one particular classroom, and these are English learners. And then the first, the overall, is their overall score from the prior year's LPAC. And then these are their individual scores, they break them down. And then towards the right, we can compare that to their smarter balance score as well as their current star instructional reading level. And this one tells us our special ed status because obviously they're English learner. So we have it sorted in this fashion. So it's another way for us to take a look and as we're putting in our metrics for what it takes to reclassify or what we need to monitor for our student populations, this is another way to have it be live, to have it not be a spreadsheet that we generate and push out and say, okay, what interventions are you providing? And then gather that back. So what I don't have on here is back on the home tab because it has a place where you can communicate, but it has students' pictures and it has personal stories and it has personal reports. And so let's pretend that I'm in an intervention team and I'm the interventionist and I'm sharing, I have 20 students I'm working with, but that's amongst five different teachers. I can communicate amongst the teachers within Mr. Elmer and say, these are the things that we've been working on, what are you noticing? So we're just, it's a, it's a communication tool, potentially, but at minimum, it's a tool that allows us to choose where might we put students in intervention and how might we monitor them.
Wow.
So we initially started it this past year, we started off with Title I schools and then a couple of other additional schools, generally higher on the English learner's side. But then there were also two other schools. Enson was one, a middle school that really wanted to pilot it and they have an intensive RTI system and he was doing a lot of work with data. So he'd been doing that actually for two years and he wanted to articulate that up to Newport Harbor. So he said, look, I've done all this work, we have our eighth grade students with their data, we're giving it to you as ninth graders, we want to start bridging that gap. All this hard work, we want to make sure that you understand what we've done on their behalf. So Enson really was working really hard and starting to kind of roll that up at Newport Harbor. And of course Newport Harbor does have a significant population of English learners.
So this is K-12?
This is K-12.
TK-12?
TK-12.
TK-12. Awesome.
Yes.
Mrs. Bartow?
Yes. So we just approved, I like this, by the way, we just approved EduPoint for Sarah. I wish she was, yeah, there she is. Okay, good. So is there a way, they're kind of similar, but they're different. They have slightly different functions. And what I like about Mr. Elmer, that it allows for the social, emotional, behavioral piece to kind of, we can see the big, whole picture of the student. EduPoint is the one that's for, the software for special education and IEP. And Mr. Elmer's, Mr. Elmer's brand new, we're renewing a contract for a piece of software we already use. Is there a way going forward that we could maybe put these together? Like, obviously that's like, we haven't used this yet, but just something to think about.
All of our students in special ed would also have, be part of the Mr. Elmer. So the EduPoint, which is Synergy, is just the IEP documents.
Okay.
It's just the, the pages and the compliance for that IEP. It doesn't, and it does a progress report, but it doesn't track progress like this. So what this would do is it would be also in our special day classes, it would be our students who are in general ed. Everybody will be using Mr. Elmer. So they're two slightly different tools.
Thank you.
I need a motion and a second before we go to the public discussion.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by Mrs. Snell, seconded by Mrs. Flor. Erica Roberts?
I wasn't expecting on speaking on this tonight, but I'm going to anyway. I was here at the board meeting when this came up, the, the Mr. Elmer Intervention Compass. I have no idea if it's a good program or not. I do know that it's going to cost us $174,598 and a gentleman from the British Columbia suggested that we use him and we can look back and see the report, I'll send it to you. He says there is nothing in place in Newport Mesa to identify at-risk students and that's why we needed this program. Our scores have been dismal for some time. We should be looking into identifying our students. We shouldn't be paying a man now in 2019 to do it for us. I want to talk about where our money is going. The, the community probably doesn't know this. The money is ours, it belongs to us and our kids and it belongs in the classrooms for them, the facilities and the curriculum and their well-being. It does not belong in bonuses or all these other things you're wasting it on. $800,000 lawsuit for an IEP that could have been settled for $40,000. It was known, largest lawsuit, that actually happened and I'll get you the document. Twice as much, Mr. Jeff Trader is a nice man and he does a good job, but he said twice as much is being spent this year than ever before in the district on curriculum. Does anyone wonder why? Because we haven't had curriculum. We didn't have a language arts program since 2001. Teachers were doing whatever they wanted willy-nilly. We didn't have real math, Dr. Navarro, that you brought in and just strapped it to us from three schools on the west side and it was a joke. I gave you, the older board members, documents showing that teachers were being, I'm so frustrated. Teachers were being given, offered money to edit it and when it came to be known, it was a he-said, she-said situation. Value teachers, this really happened. I have the documents, I've given them to you. I asked you to return my folders that were this big, not one of you returned them. I will give them to the new board members so that they can see everything we're saying is absolutely true. Just to close, we shouldn't be using a company like this. We should be looking at Anderson and the program I told you called MobiMax. You should have done it two years ago. This year they will do over a million problems. It's teacher, parent, and student connected. And I hope this works, but why are we doing it now? Why weren't we doing it four years ago? We have to do things differently. This leadership is not getting it done for us. Thank you.
Mr. Drake, you made these comments earlier, but would you explain why this software
is new and how our principals had to do all of this by hand previously on their own spreadsheets and weren't able to get this data on their, at their fingertips like this software provides?
Sure. Yes, this, so this software really is actually in the teacher's hands so that they are able to draw on the multiple sources of data and input, student work, social, emotional information, so that they can intervene and support students in the moment. In the past, principals had to gather the data from, from teachers, put that data together by hand, and then within maybe a week at best, get that information back to teachers in order for them to intervene. This is at-the-desk, in-the-classroom-level information for teachers to intervene for all kids in, in reality, not just our at-risk kids.
This is not curriculum.
This is not curriculum, no.
This is a tool to help teachers, it's like an advanced role book.
Was there anything comparable to this available anywhere on the market?
Not that we found. No, not, not that we found and not to the level of customer service and customization. Each principal, each teacher can actually customize their own walls in relation to the data and information that they want to use in order to intervene and support students.
Thank you. Mrs. Flor? So this is a renewal. This is not, we have been using Intervention Compass and, or Mr. Elmer, Mr. Elmer is just a euphemism for something. So how long have we been using it and how many schools have been using it? This is not a pilot. They piloted it a couple of years ago. How many schools have been using this program in the last two years?
I'm going to probably ask Ms. Galey. I don't know exactly. What I can tell you is George has worked closely with schools who have demonstrated interest. At the beginning, I believe there were two elementary schools, Title I schools, that helped kind of look at it, is this something we're interested in? And he slowly expanded from there. I would say we got to about five elementary schools and word started passing and moving amongst schools. And as they contacted us, George would work with them and get them on board in utilizing the tool. It was this year where we decided to bring Enson and Newport Harbor into the loop so that we were, you know, seeing the flow of information all the way through the system. This is really our first wall-to-wall contract with Intervention Compass.
But it was actually through the leadership at the schools as well as the teachers who were, I can remember the data chats and I can remember years ago, I think Char from the Corona del Mar zone and from the Costa Mesa zone, they were all complaining about exactly that. There was no repository in one place. They had to pull up from this, this data, this data, there was no real dashboard.
That's right.
So this is really coming from both not only our teacher, you know, our teachers are primarily who have been asking for this because this is, how often is this uploaded? Every, is this every day?
Daily, yeah.
As data gets put in.
As data is, is put in, data gets, gets back to the parent, to teachers.
Yes.
Does it go down as far as to each student and where their gaps are? Does it? Does it go down as far as to each student and where their gaps are, does it identify the gaps?
Yes, you saw kind of the color coding there.
Right.
It, it does identify the gaps based off of whatever assessment and, and those, those score correlations to where students should be, it, it does do that.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Will teachers be using this information to communicate it then to parents?
Yes.
Are there plans in place for that though, or it's like hypothetical?
Yeah.
I feel like this information is really good for parents if they see, you know, more so than a report card, really specifically where their child needs help or where they're excelling.
Absolutely, yes. So this is a tool that can be used both, like I said, in, in the moment with kids as well as at conferences to demonstrate, you know, where their students are and also provide ideas for support at home.
Well, I guess my question is more like, so will there be more of a routine process? Like every week, here's where your child is, that file can be exported? Is there any?
Those will be site, I mean, that would be a site decision in, in putting systems like that in place.
I think that should be district decision.
You know, part of, part of what we want to make sure is that there was, there was parent education behind it as opposed to just sending a report home. So I could anticipate that that first round of conferences would be an opportunity for teachers to be sitting one-on-one with parents and going through some of this information and then being able to follow up with communication through Mr. Elmer or other forms in relation to how their kids are doing.
And I would imagine that if you had a child whose initial forays into this was giant red flags, that a teacher would be talking to the parent sooner than a parent conference. It's, it's part of teacher practice and individual teacher practice and I don't know that we as a body are the ones that would be telling each individual teacher how they are to communicate with their parents.
Well, I disagree with that a little bit, but I also feel like, I just wanted to know if that process is in place, so like it, it's possible with this software?
It is possible.
Okay, that's my main question, thank you.
Mrs. Bartow?
I just wanted to clarify because I am from the software world and I think might make it a little clearer. This is a web-based technology, right? I mean effectively it's software as a service, so anything, it's not like they're downloading it to their machine, it's real-time because it's whenever people put it in as you would do with QuickBooks or anything that you use online.
That's correct.
Mrs. Yelsey?
Is this program one that can ultimately be used by all the schools and teachers? So not only looking at those kids who need intervention, but those kids who are already getting the, the work and need acceleration?
Yes, so this, this, this is before you so that we can go wall-to-wall with this for all teachers, administrators, support staff.
But I think we have to make a point that some, I know some principals and teachers are, are excited also about that so they can use the opportunity to accelerate kids.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. It, it's not, it's not just for intervention, it's, it's for, you know, supporting kids to accelerate as well.
I think the example that Mrs. Galey used where she showed a Ray third grade student that's reading at sixth grade and that just popped right up, there he was, right, he, she, don't know the gender, right up at the top, there was that student. And as a teacher and as, or a principal, I would be saying, what are we doing to help this child and enrich them and push them and give them the opportunity to grow? It's, it's an equal opportunity piece of, piece of software to let us know, teachers know in real-time where they are and what they can do to help. So one more tool.
One unique thing I would like to add about what Mr. Elmer provides is its incredible ability to look at multiple measures. When you can take in one software program and bring in star reading data, accelerated reader data, LPAC data, DIBELS data, Sback data, all in one spot, the amount of time that is saved by looking at a student's performance in all of those areas in one program saves so much time for teachers, administrators, anyone really wanting to dig in and being able to disaggregate it with all of the students in the class, teacher level, it just is a really powerful, unique thing that we haven't seen in any of the other software programs that we've used in the district.
Mrs. Black?
And I, you know, concur because that was what was very exciting to me because I've always wanted to know, how do we know, you know, if the teacher needs support from the district? How are we going to know, you know, what they need? And, and we've been doing this forever, you know, trying to figure out that magic, what's the magic bullet? And so now teachers have shared with me, it instantly, you know, boils down to one intervention and they can actually email the parent and say, we've been working on this, your student needs this much more practice or support or please work with them on the math or whatever it is and it just is instantly available to them. And without having to do all that background work and whatnot, they, the teachers are actually able to have the time to contact the parent or take that, you know, few minutes because they're not having to, you know, figure it out and try different, you know, prescriptions if you will. Great.
Okay, no more lights? Thank you. It's been moved by Mrs. Snell, seconded by Mrs. Flore. This is not a resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passed. 19C, Mr. Drake. This is the Mr. Drake Show.
Yes, it is. So if you recall, I believe it was the 14th of May, I came to you and with our two history social studies secondary TOSSes and presented the results of our adoption process, the process that we've really used to adopt materials and build capacity at the same time of our teachers. And so before you this evening is a recommendation to adopt the materials or the, the instructional materials that the, the pilot committees and adoption committees recommended. I do want to just publicly draw notice to, we did make a bit of a typo correction that was corrected on this. The last two, Grade 12 Economics and American Democracy, it's the same publisher, it's the same title. What we did in the initial publication of the agenda was we switched Economics and American Democracy. We've made that correction, I just want to make sure that that's made public. But before you is an opportunity to approve or answer, we're willing to also answer any questions that you might have prior to.
Thank you. I need a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Black moved, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Yelsey, discussion?
I just have a comment. And that's, I would have liked to have seen, I know that they were on display, but sometimes I just am really busy and I can't get over there. And so I would have liked to have at least, somewhere here, I would have liked to have just a copy of one textbook, just in the future. I mean, we, we used to get, we used to get a, a single, a single copy of one of them so we could look at it.
In other words, the board in the past, did every board member get all of the books?
No, not all, not all the books.
We just got, like one set to the board and everybody switched?
Yeah, we just sort of, you know, same thing with literature textbooks, literature books, we used to get the books so that we could read them and, and when we were adopting, that was years ago. But I would have liked to have just had a scene because I want to, my issue is, I have no problem with them, but I want to know how engaging they are, I want to look at them. I mean, I'm trusting the teachers and all of that, but I would have liked to have seen that and also what, what's the parental component now that most of our texts, most of our textbooks now have a parental or some sort of online part? I would have just liked to have seen, just, just mine.
We have teachers here, can they talk to them?
We do, if you have some questions for, in relation to that, I have the TOSSes here. Jackie and Chris, would you mind coming on up?
Oh, that's mine, they'd like to.
I mean, you've had to sit, at least we could make it.
Yeah.
Make it relevant, you know?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Chris Manning, I'm one of the TOSSes.
Thank you.
Can I answer a question?
Yeah, is my lead on?
Push it again. Thank you, it just. So can you just tell me about the parent?
Component.
The parent component and the online component, if there is.
So for parent component, are you referring to?
What the parents can look at.
How a parent would access it?
Yeah, is there, is there an opportunity for the parents to access?
All of the platforms have a digital component that is, in some instances localized, like you can put it on a device, but there's always at least a web component that you can go to and search. Some of them have audio functions, they have text functions, they have test functions, they have, there are three different publishers though, so they're all a little different in their capacities, but yeah, it's robust.
Spanish, translatable?
They all have Spanish.
Yeah, the publishers take care of all the translations, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Hi.
Hi.
I have two questions. I did get a chance to look at them, some of them were very large and I felt so sad for one child that would have to put it in their backpack and walk home any distance, like 50 pounds and they would fall over. I had a question, I know you guys, we've saw kind of an overview of the consensus process. What were some, did you ask, as part of that, did you ask any specific bias-related questions in that group? Because I know oftentimes with history textbooks, that can be a touchy subject.
Yeah, so with bias, what are you referring to? Because that's a very large subject.
Racial bias, implicit bias.
Yeah, so there's, there's access inequity, there's citizenship, which is civic discourse and how you address conflicting viewpoints and all of that. But every text offers primary sources and primary sources typically are arranged so that you have opposing viewpoints of a given scenario. So if you're dealing with a racial issue, you would have multiple racial viewpoints from a primary source standpoint, so not just the text. So typically they're augmented with multiple viewpoints from primary sources, that's typically how history.
And it was one of the items that we actually looked for in our evidence.
Would you?
It was.
That was a good sentence. Make sure we can hear it.
It was actually one of the items that we actually looked for in our evidence when we evaluated the materials and collected evidence from them.
Great. There was one that I was looking at earlier and John walked by and it was from 2006 and it was one that we're not using, but it was still in the stacks over there and there was some language in there that was to me inappropriate and so that's why I'm asking that question. And then I wanted to know too, we have an ongoing right now Human Relations Task Force, was this, were these books brought in, were they presented to that group? It seems like that would be, that would have been a great opportunity.
So one of the, one of the opportunities that we are going to take and it came out in consensus, especially specifically in our 11th grade group, you know, there was, you know, after consensus, there is an energy in the room and there was a teacher, I think I even shared this, that talked about this is an opportunity for our teachers to really take this opportunity and get on the same page in, in moving forward. And one of the things that we actually discussed in our meeting this morning is exactly that, is how are we going to incorporate, and, and these guys really affirm that they really already do, but how are we going to make sure that together we're incorporating empathy, acceptance through the building of knowledge around historical events, ideas, thoughts and so forth? So that is some work for us to do, to get on the same page, but it's also definitely something we've considered in the process as well.
That sounds great. I hope we do that extensively. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming up. I see no, I see no other lights. It was moved by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven zero, thank you very much. Mr. Drake, tell us more.
Yeah, I'm up again, aren't I?
Yeah, it's, that's.
Yes, so this is that time of year where we're, you know, kind of closing the year and opening next year at the same time. So our secondary sites have been hard at work really for probably the last three or four months, you know, identifying some courses that either need to be updated or written. And so before you are several courses that have been submitted as written, new written courses of study. A couple of things to keep in mind with these, especially when we're talking about, say, some elective courses. Right now, those are, I'm going to say better than hunches, but ideas and directions that schools want to go. I know a question came through earlier that, you know, which schools are these going to be offered at? Courses are offered if student interest is there. And so some of these new, especially elective courses that have been written, you may not see offered next year if in fact, you know, the, the interest from students is not there, however it stays in the system as a course that we could offer when, when that interest is there. There are also several courses here, you'll see the, the introduction or the media arts courses as well as the film and, and video production courses, which are coming in collaboration with our CTE office and sites and really are, you know, sealing the, the pathways in those two areas at, at some of our sites.
Thank you. Mrs. Flore?
I can't tell you how excited I am to see the humanities, the visual and performing arts being really brought to the forefront in terms of CTE, beginning piano, holy moly, how fabulous is that to provide opportunities for kids? And it's A through G re-compliant. I mean, I'm just excited because I was just at an ROP special meeting today and with the five, the four other districts, Huntington Beach, Tustin, Irvine and Saddleback, and all of us were lamenting the fact that we have placed such a heavy emphasis on STEM that visual and performing arts, which touches the soul of every human being, is being pushed aside for these, for the STEM and yet this is what makes us human, is the humanities, is the arts. It's a universal language and so I am just thrilled that what we see before us is an opportunity for kids to explore that, their creative side. I just think it's just fabulous and for us to be able to offer, thank you Jeffrey at Newport Harbor for bringing forward piano as an opportunity for kids to, to learn.
Let's see if they like that.
Just great. So terrific, well done, well done.
I don't know who did it first.
Twenty courses.
Mrs. Bartow. They popped on at the same time.
So mine's the opposite direction, sorry Martha. The governor's budget and there's a lot of bills coming out that prioritize the computer science specifically and technology and so I'm glad to see that the computer science is getting a rewrite, it looks like. Is, when these are rewritten, are they rewritten to line up with those standards? What's the, what's the process where they are picked to be rewritten?
They're supposed to be A through G too.
Oh, AP Computer Science Prisons. Michael, do you have a response? I'm going to ask Michael from our CTE office to come up and, and address that.
Yeah, the answer to that is yes, that's the whole idea. The rewrites have to happen because you're not synced up with your anchor standards, core standards, the CTE standards. So the previous course was absolutely not lined up and so those had to be synced up and that's exactly what the rewrite was for.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move approval?
Ms. Anderson has, sorry.
I had a question about the Spanish Language Arts and Culture, one A and B. It looks like that is for Spanish, the recommended skills are Spanish III, so is this supposed to be in place of what AP Spanish, the fourth year Spanish was? I know there was an AP Spanish Language and Literature that was formally offered? Is this in addition to that? Is this?
No, no, so, so this is out of Newport Harbor and one of Sean's objectives here is to give another opportunity for Spanish acquisition. You know, a lot of people think, and, and this is what, he wanted me to make sure I clarify, that this is Spanish for Spanish speech speakers, but it is not. It is Spanish taught from a more cultural-based perspective as opposed just, as opposed to just language acquisition perspective. So there will be, it is available to, to Spanish speakers as well as non-Spanish speakers and once you finish the, the second course of it, you would be ready for AP Spanish.
Or IB.
Or IB, yes.
Is, but this specifically, the, the fourth year Spanish program at Newport Harbor is AP Spanish Language and Culture. So that's why I'm asking, is it, it almost sounds like it would be a two-pronged, so are we, are we funneling people away from taking the AP version?
No, not at all, not at all. This will prepare them for that.
Some of our students take foreign language early so that they would reach level four in their junior year.
Correct.
So they could add, if they're just a total, I'm like, I am going to go live in Spain and I'm going to become, work for the United Nations or something, they might want to have five years of our Spanish before they get to college. So it's an extra opportunity. So it doesn't replace, it, but it could, I mean, maybe somebody doesn't want to take AP but they still want to keep going, so I don't think it's.
Well, one of my, the reason I'm asking this question is one of my neighbors felt like she was put in a fourth level Spanish, a fourth year Spanish class and not an AP Spanish level class of the same name. So that's why I'm asking, is that what this is? Like, because if a fourth, if someone who is a Spanish for Spanish speaker and in their fourth year at the high school level, I would think we would want to be encouraging them as much as possible. as possible to take an AP. And so my question is, if the recommended skills for this are Spanish III and Spanish immersion, are we funneling? Are we separating?
Tracking evil.
I don't, no, I, no, we are not. So you would take Spanish Language Arts 1, Spanish Language Arts 2, and then that, you could go into IB Spanish or AP Spanish, or Spanish IV if you didn't want to take IB or AP and you just wanted to finish off the path.
At Newport Harbor, the fourth-year AP Spanish is AP Spanish Language Arts and Culture.
Okay.
So if the same school is asking for the same class but not the AP track?
I think what you're thinking of is, I think that's the IB course.
No, it's AP.
I believe it's IB Spanish Language Arts. Is the course that they would take, or they would take AP Spanish.
That course would be AP.
It's not Arts and Culture.
Okay.
And I have a, I have a general question for Dr. Bauermeister. Oftentimes, and I found this over the course of my long, not really long, term, sitting up here and understanding the high school curriculum, it often seems like their, like curriculum for each high school is done in a bubble. And the principals sit down and talk to each other, and if, if this course is offered at a stancia, and it sounds really good, then Newport Harbor might adopt it. Why don't we just have a giant list of courses that are adopted district-wide and don't necessarily have to be specific to a school? That, I just, why?
Yeah, we don't adopt courses specific to a school. If you approve a course, it is for the district.
So, I mean, it's different than whatever the other one was, so there'll be some changes in it. That's why it's got a new name and we're adopting?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Um, technical, technical...
When they're updating it, why would they change it?
Well, beginning piano, 1A and B. We've had beginning piano at Costa Mesa for a long time. So why would beginning piano be changed? Why wouldn't that curriculum work?
Yeah, this is a revision to that.
Oh, then that's why.
To bring it up to date.
Okay, then I, thank you. Point of question. All righty, I need a motion. So moved. And a second. Second. It was moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That was just a late aye? Okay, thank you. Seven zero. And those lucky kids, you're lucky kids. You guys get neat stuff to take.
I was thinking that, you know, we don't have a drop-in opportunity for adults, because there's a lot of these courses in here that would be really fun, too.
Back in the day.
Be part of, I know.
Before we go to community input on the non-agenda items, I just wanted to commend our previous input people that were so respectful of our time constraints. We have a lot of comments, so I'd like to make sure that the next group of people are also very polite and stay within their time constraints, because I don't like when I have to cut you off and go, that's it, your time is over. So I just want to thank you in advance. And Mrs. Black, you can do your stuff.
This is an opportunity for the public to address non-agenda topics within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, per Board Policy 9323. Each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. In compliance with Board Policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Victor Legato.
What?
With Chuck Peterson on deck.
You go first?
He's right here, I think. Are you Victor?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. You're first. Chuck, you're on deck.
Good evening. My name is Victor. I'm a school bus driver. Thank you for listening to us. So the reason why we are here is because we're school bus drivers, and the way they're going to calculate the hours for benefits is going to be different than the way they've been doing it before. And because of it, the way that's going to impact us is going to be badly, because for some of us, if this goes ahead, we might not be able to afford for the health insurance, which is, for me and my family, a basic necessity. And I've been working in the district for 12 years, which, 10 of them, I was able to afford to pay for the benefits. And it will be really sad for me, like, if this year I can afford to pay for them. So I love my job. I hear early people in the hour talking about caring for the kids. Most of the drivers, we love our job and we care about the kids, and I think we show in the work we do. Our job is really sensitive. It requires for us 100% of our attention. And me thinking about maybe or not be able to afford the health insurance is kind of issue for me. So I would like for the board to help or assist us with that issue. Like, regardless with your answer or the result of this meeting, I think me and the rest of the drivers, we continue to do our job with the best of our knowledge, and that's it. That's it.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Joaquin Torres, you're on deck. Go, Chuck.
Okay, following up on Victor, what happened was, we got a notice on 5, well, it would be May 10, 19, that they're going to set up having a benefit week, we're going to have a benefit month. We had a benefit week for 18-plus years, and now they're going to a month, so most likely, all of our premiums are going to raise, because I'll get into why we shouldn't be called part-time. But because you're a part-time worker, by the hours you work within that week, you go into the schedules, and we're all going to go down a couple of schedules, and we're going to be paying $313.50 to $470 more a month. We have single moms with kids. Like Victor says, we give 110%. You cannot come to work and have a bad day being a bus driver, because bad things will happen. So with all that, we went to our union thinking, okay, we'll get, the negotiations are up, you know, they're current, so we could get into those and get some of our issues taken care of. We're told by the union, because of the late notice of this, that we will not be able to get into these negotiations. We're going to have to wait to next year. Next year is too late for us. All right, so I think all of us drivers, we're called part-time, and it really bothers me, because we're not part-time workers, and we need to be reclassified as full-time employees with full benefits. And the reason is, we have the most sensitive job in the school district. We have 70 kids on a 40-foot bus, driving around Newport Beach, and people, because you notice, the last three years, there's been more cars on the road, people are really aggressive. So we need to be on our game at all times. We work a long day. We work from 6 o'clock to 5 o'clock. If you do a field trip, you're working 8. You're pulling an 8, 11-hour to 13-hour day, and you take up our whole day. We can't do nothing in between that. So basically, it's a running joke to my friends, I work a full-time job and I get paid part-time. All right? And plus, I'm just, I have six different licenses. To be a bus driver, it's hard. You have a Class B, a pass for endorsement, you have a brake, air brake endorsement, California Special Driver's License, you have a medical examiner, you have a first aid. If something happens on the bus, we're going to be first responders to help that kid, and problems happen. And the next thing, I like to have us all be six-hour guaranteed employees, because we work hard, and that will help us to retain the drivers we have. One minute, one second. And retain and bring other drivers on. We have a turnover ratio of about 20% yearly.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Yearly, because most of the subs will leave and go to other districts, because most districts guarantee seven to six.
Thank you. And then Daniel or Danielle? Koutenies?
Good evening, members of the board. Basically, my fellow drivers, they said it all, and it's the same thing. We currently have four hour, that's our main, or like what we get, where we're guaranteed. And other districts, they get six hours. Orange, they have six, I think. Fullerton, they have seven. And how come we don't get the same hours as other districts? And, yeah, our job is really hard. We're restricted by the hours. We can only work a certain amount of hours, and the benefits, the bracket should be lowered. Instead of consider a full-time 35 hours, should be 30, because that's, some of the drivers, they don't even work 30 hours, and they, it's really high for the benefits. And I've been working for the district two, about two years, and I really love my job, but it gets hard with the amount of benefits and money that we have to pay. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Daniel Koutenies?
I'm tired.
We wake up early.
We so understand. We so, just for, just for clarification for our drivers who may or may not have ever been to a board meeting, we are not allowed to respond to you about this, but we've got the input and we've taken it in, and we have heard you. Thank you. All righty, thank you, and go home. Get some sleep. Thank you. Um...
Could I, could I ask, could I ask the bus drivers that are here to raise their hands, just so I know?
Bus drivers, will you raise your hand?
Who's here?
Just so we can see how many of you are here.
Okay.
Plus, send by leave.
Plus, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. That we're here tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Doughty?
So I'm Britt Doughty. I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers, and we represent 1,240 educators, certificated educators throughout the district. And I want to talk about the district priorities in which a draft form was presented at the last board meeting on the 28th. The priorities are A, B, and C, and C is related to the community, and it reads, C1 reads, NMUSD will build and foster meaningful partnerships and shared commitment with stakeholders, including students, parents, employees, employee associations, and community partners, and the development of the whole child. And the last bullet point of priority one, C1 reads, continue to build collaborative labor management relationships. So my ask is for the board to provide leadership and to create expectations that those priorities and that last bullet point are truly embraced. At the last board meeting, there was a presentation given on teen stress and the thought exchange survey. And that survey was sent out in November. Thoughts were collected and analyzed and shared with a lot of different stakeholders, including students and administrators, over the next five months. But during that presentation that was done, no one at the board level or in the presenters' level asked what the teachers, the counselors, the psychologists, the social workers, or nurses thought about that survey. Those professionals are the ones directly involved with helping create the whole child. Yet they were not involved in the survey. And the union that represents them was also not involved in helping to design the survey, analyzing the survey, or having follow-up with it. Another example would be thinking about the budget tonight, in which 90% of the budget, approximately 90%, is involved with employee costs for salary and benefits, and that standard across school districts across the entire U.S. However, we're not involved in the board meeting tonight. We're not part of the agenda. The PTA and the students are a formal part of the agenda, but your employee associations such as CSCE and NMFT are not. So if we're truly trying to build these partnerships, we need the board to think about, as they develop the priorities, what are the small things that can be done to build those relationships? We need you to help set the tone and to set those expectations that the labor organizations are involved in the operations of the district on a consistent basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to remind the board that we spent two years going to the Labor Management Initiative. In fact, Board Clerk Flor attended all of those meetings, so did Mrs. Olson, and we walked away hoping that we could return back to an interest-based bargaining perspective. After two years, we are still waiting to move in that direction, but it takes two sides. It takes both sides to be willing to do that. We extended, we spent the two years going to all of these sessions, hours and hours, and for listening to the presenters, and we're still committed to doing that. But it's, it's got to be both sides willing to engage.
And I think we have an excellent opportunity right now to make a better relationship. To continue it, I know that we were talking about it earlier. So we're, we're not adverse to working. All righty, so here's my, please, please choose your best. Martha Omira.
Marty.
She said Martha. Today you are Martha.
I'm getting older, I guess I'm just a bit more...
Thanks, Marty.
Good evening, Dr. Navarro, President Matoya, and school trustees. I think you've made a good decision to have a regular board meetings only once a month. Maybe that will encourage more of the community to attend, and I have some other suggestions. You need to video the board meetings and have them streamed on Channel 26 multiple times during the week, just like the Costa Mesa City Council does. Not everyone can stop their clock and watch a school board meeting, and not many can come and sit for three hours at a school board meeting. If you seriously want people to attend a school board meeting, you need to change your format and have us speakers come at the beginning. There is no reason to wait for three hours and for some of them paying $60. Nobody's going to do that for a school board meeting. Put the talkers back in the front. Why not have, so another suggestion, why not have a school board representative report on one question every time there's a meeting? Example, what is your favorite class and what makes it special? That would be more interesting to all of us, rather than they had a prom, or today's testing, or today we had a pajama party. Get something that we can learn from the high school kids. Number four, why not have the award ceremonies like other school districts do on the alternate Tuesday? I'm talking about Teacher of the Year, that type of one. The little ones, okay, fine, but not the big ones. You're going to get the people there anyway. If you want parents to engage in a particular subject, have a discussion, maybe once every two months, and have an interaction. Not where you, we talk, you can't talk back to us, and we can't talk to you. So it's dead. Have a discussion every couple of months. On another subject, when is Dr. Navarro's contract up? Why do the legal costs continue to escalate? Multiple lawsuits against him have been paid by this district and numerous special ed lawsuits. Why do we not have schools teaching in a variety of teaching styles? You could probably decrease the special education population by a significant numbers. One size does not fit all. Why are some students only achieving at the 40 and 45% proficiency level? More variety in teaching styles and better achieving schools would discourage any charter school to even think about trying to get into this district. They would have no customers. The charter school is costing this district big money. For this reason, we need to not renew Dr. Navarro's contract.
Wendy Lees? Wendy Lees, Gary Friedland, you're on deck.
Madam President, and members of the school board, Dr. Navarro. Just looking at page, section one, introduction 21 on the budget, nobody really talks about the fact that $326,754,535 is the amount of the revenue. That's tax dollars. That's mine, everybody's, all of our tax dollars. So are we getting the most bang for our buck? I don't think we are. On page 11 of the LCAP, I didn't realize this till I was reading it and thinking about it. Ed Code 52062 says that there should be gathering of feedback from all stakeholders and from constituents, including parents, teachers, administrators, students, and other district and school staff members, and community members. You know that there's nothing in here on this list on 144 that says that any community members, it's all schools, all parents. Why aren't we going out into the, why aren't you going out into the community and asking the community, what do you think about the schools? What kind of a job? Are we getting the most bang for our buck? Couple of years ago, the superintendent, whose, whose contract is up, a friend of mine looked on and the information, and he makes like more than $400,000 when you all add it up. We have a lot of administrators also that are in the six figures. So is, are we getting the worth? If people are leaving our district, there must be a reason why. Someone told me this week that the Chargers did not move into Costa Mesa because of the schools and the scores. We guys cannot operate in some kind of a vacuum and pretend that everything's hunky-dory out here in the community. We're taxpayers and we expect more. We noticed that in January, you started the superintendent's review. So that was quite a while ago. So you've probably been talking about the renewal of his contract. A lot of us don't think the contract should be renewed. Thank you.
Mrs. Roberts, you're on deck.
Good evening. Tonight I'll focus on four examples of mediocrity at Mesa. I generally solve school issues by speaking privately to those in charge, but I think it's time to share. When my kids started attending Mesa, I noticed the condition of the campus and began to inquire why the place was so filthy. Thousands of black splotches of decade-old gum deposits everywhere I looked. I asked several staff members and found out they had been complaining about this for years, but felt ignored. I made it my mission to get the campus cleaned up. After over a year of effort and hard work by Doctors Haley and Padilla, we had our first campus cleanup day in 10 years last October. Growing up, I always had great respect for teachers. The majority are hardworking and capable, but there are some lazy ones. Last year, my seventh grader began telling me about all the movies she was shown in her classes. Movies like Moana, Toy Story, Finding Nemo, Flubber, Shrek. A total of 16 movies were shown, which equates to about 32 hours of education thrown out the window. I understand teachers get burned out near the end of the semester, but when our state test scores indicate we have about 50% failure rate, can we really afford to waste so much time on stupid cartoons? My wife and I complained, and Dr. Baumeister was kind enough to listen to us and get involved. Movies now have to be relevant and followed up by a discussion or assignment. Unfortunately, that message did not get through to everyone. In March, the eighth grade Delta students went on a field trip to Knott's Bray Farm for Physics Day. This day was billed as an opportunity for students to perform simple physics experiments. To make things easy for teachers, Knott's has downloadable worksheets with 17 problems, where kids do simple measurements and use basic trig and kinematic equations. For some reason, the worksheets were never handed out. Instead, when they arrived at the park, they were told to have fun. This trip had zero educational value, so we asked for help. Dr. B immediately acted and gave teachers the same message as before, but now for field trips. We all know there's nothing new about cheating in schools, and I've heard many stories how common it is at Mesa. Some teachers only create one version of their tests and have their students grade them immediately after they are taken. No surprise, answers are then shared with the next period. In closing, I've made the following observations. Students are afraid to ask teachers questions because they don't want to look dumb. Principals and teachers are afraid to voice their concerns in fear of jeopardizing their jobs. And everyone's terrified of the supervisor. Sorry, everyone's terrified of the superintendent. I think there's a lack of communication in this district, and it should not be a shock to anyone, there are many unhappy employees here. Dr. Navarro, everything I just said ultimately is your responsibility because you run this place. I hear you manage by fear and intimidation. Do some research, and you will find out, in the long run, that management style does not work. It only creates dissent, apathy, low morale, and burnout, and ultimately harms our kids.
Mrs. Roberts. Erica. And then, basically, it's going to be then Lauren, then Grace, then Jeff.
Back again. So I'm going to set up, because I have things to show you.
It's your time.
It's all of our time, which is very valuable. So, Dr. Navarro, I would like if you would look at me for this presentation. The last presenter got no looks, no looking up even when he said his name. So dear members of the board and valued community members, we've all heard the saying, when someone shows you who they are, believe them. Well, Fred Navarro has been showing us who he is for a long time. And tonight, I would like to speak to his ethics and honesty. He has shown us that he has very little of either one. This whole meeting is about respect and trust. This is what you get when you ask for a public record. Completely blacked out, just like this. Completely blacked out, then you have to hire a lawyer to get it unredacted. It comes back to you unredacted, and it's disgusting. Bribery of teachers, all true. Dr. Navarro said Swan Math wasn't in the materials, right here. Envision, dump it. We don't need it, it's not on the Williams list. He told us Envision was in every classroom, and it was encouraged to be used. How can you dump it if it's being used in 2014 and 15? Mariners Report, this cost $80,000 for these papers. This could have all been finished if you would have listened to teachers when they told you they were suffering. Instead, we went to a lawsuit, 80 grand. You wonder where our money's going. It's not going to the classroom. I'm going to move on because I'm going to run out of time. Going to read fast. Fred, you do not have the respect of this community. You haven't earned it, you don't listen to people, you cut off the community. You are never at the scene of an issue, and you're afraid from signing your name to almost everything. You don't look at people. You are not the face of this district. You are smoke and mirrors man. There is a huge mess in this district. Misuse of funds, lawyers' fees out of control, consultants out of control. You are so worried about being right, that even when you're wrong, you'll waste $800,000 on an IEP to be wrong. There's plenty of examples. Anyone who wants to read Steve Smith's blog, they're all listed in his blog tonight, Steve Smith WordPress. So many examples. $500,000, Estancia pools. Dana, you told us that that happened because they had to trench and it was going to cost too much money. Do the work, talk to the people that own those homes. You would not do that in Corona del Mar. Dana, you haven't been to our school in years. You are not a good representation, you do not know what's going on. You should be ashamed of yourself. Estancia, toxic fumes, teachers getting sick. Went to a lawsuit. Aquatics program at the Estancia, drain the pool, no plan, fill it up, 250 grand. Cronyism beyond belief. The evaluation process is not given to the public. We do not trust. Half the kids are failing. We heard 1,000 kids are leaving this district. 1,000! That's crazy. 800 last year. That should make you nervous. We need a superintendent. The public does not have confidence in him. He is terrible and a liar. Thank you.
Lauren Roberts?
Thank you. Okay, so my time's already starting, so I'll begin. Hello and good evening Newport Mesa Board and Community. I'm about to give my perspective on the Newport Mesa Unified Schools, so please pay close attention and try to make eye contact with me if possible. My name's Lauren Roberts. I'm currently a freshman at Pacifica Christian High School. I've been going to Newport Mesa schools up until high school. From kindergarten to sixth grade, I went to Mariners Elementary, then graduated to Enson Intermediate School. While at Mariners, the math curriculum in place was Swan Math. Thanks to the board, this curriculum was removed after four years. Sadly, this was not soon enough. This math program was a $4 million payment for the Newport Mesa District out of the community taxes, and was a horrific curriculum. Swan Math was riddled with errors and was truly an atrocious book to attempt learning from. This curriculum, as well as many other of the poor decisions that have been made, have put me as well as thousands of other students at a disadvantage in our education. Switching to Pacifica, I finally got to experience what truly loving school is like, instead of getting, dreading getting out of bed every single day. I'm now in a fun and positive learning environment, but sadly, not everybody has the opportunity to go to a different school. Board, the papers that I handed out to you before I began talking contain images from the bathrooms and rooms at Enson. Please take a look at these. Dr. Navarro, you're the superintendent of the district. This means that you're responsible for whatever occurs at the schools. I am begging you to start doing what you're supposed to. If you were doing your jobs, the bathroom in the school wouldn't be looking like those pictures, but sadly, they do. Dana Black, you're specifically in charge of Mariners Elementary in Enson. I would love to know if this looks like an environment that you would want to learn in, or if you would want to use these bathrooms. I know I didn't want to. I would go every single day trying not to use the bathrooms. That shouldn't be how school is. The reason that I'm not handing out these images to the entire room is because I think that they are embarrassment to the community and to the mediocre work that the people we trust with our children and with our community are putting into their jobs. The majority of Newport Mesa schools are legitimately falling apart, not to mention the classrooms are extremely hot due to the fact that there still is no air conditioning after years. For a moment, please try to imagine sitting in a classroom on a plastic chair. They're so hot that they're sticking to you when you sit down. The teachers hand out papers that you fill out and are almost immediately throwing away after. There is no air conditioning in the classroom, books and materials are decades old. This is the kind of environment you're creating, and call it a state-of-the-art environment. I find it atrocious to sit in these classrooms, and it is truly unbearable to imagine trying to learn in them as well. The belief statement of the board says, quote-unquote, "Our first responsibility is to provide a quality education program that meets the needs of all students in the district and that all children can learn best in a safe, clean, caring, and aesthetically pleasing environment." It makes me feel sick reading some of my friends' letters, saying that they think that school is terrible, horrible, and part of my language, but they even call it hell. I don't want to go to school like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Roberts?
Hello, Board members and valuable community. My name is Grace Roberts, and I'm here with my sisters. I'd like to present a visual to the community. I know you remember things when it is a visual, so I chose jelly beans. Because just like kids, they're small, all different, sweet, and you never know which ones you'll get. This jar represents, oh, this jar represents all the kids in our district. Now pay attention, this part's special. This jar represents 50%, that is, that are kids failing, 50%. That's a lot of kids who need your help. We didn't get the help for years with Swan Map. Swan hurt kids, teachers and parents. We need your help, then and now. Listen to the teachers and parents and kids. Don't, kids don't get to make decisions yet. Adults must do it for us. You are supposed to do what, what is the best for us. Change is necessary, please help this district.
Jeff Roberts, I'm sorry.
Before my time starts, I want to acknowledge the bus drivers and all of the members of this district who do so much for our children, and thank you, you have the most important job in the world. Thank you. I want to ask Mr. Jim Rogers to stand up. Jim Rogers was my junior-year marine science teacher at Corona del Mar High School. He was more than instrumental and encouraged me to run for ASB president amongst other things at Corona del Mar. And Jim, you're a lifetime friend, thank you for that. If I could please reset the clock now.
Go ahead. Well, I gave you yes to the bus drivers, I didn't know you were going to go longer. Go ahead, reset it.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board and valued members of the community. My name is Jeff Roberts, and I am the proud father of four daughters, two of which you met tonight, ages 6, 10, 12, and 14, kindergarten through high school. I attended NMUSD along with my four siblings. Lifetime friendships started while attending Newport Mesa. My family is full of teachers and educators. We have joyfully given to this district for over 45 years. In our family, teachers are the most valued and honored members of society. I am here tonight to share my sincere frustration and discontent over the state of our beloved district. Over the past four years, my wife Erica and I have brought huge concerns and feel depleted losing our rights as taxpayers, advocates, community members, and most importantly, parents. We have worked tirelessly for answers on clarity and issues affecting the students in our district. Through this process, it became very clear that our district leadership team is dishonest, intimidating, deliberately hides information, and not capable of leading our children's education. This complaint and observation starts directly with you, Fred Navarro. We started with the Mariners Blue Ribbon Fiasco, asking questions about honesty and integrity at our children's school. From there, the onion layers peeled back and revealed so much, we could not turn our backs. Here's a short list of Dr. Navarro's poor decisions. Profound misuse of district funds. Poor budget oversight. Growing lawsuits. Swan Math. Allow me to pause for a second. Swan Math is the single biggest injustice in our kids' education. The chain of events is documented. Dr. Navarro's choice to support his personal friend, Cy Swan, at the cost of $4 million, leaving this generation impacted with their mathematical foundation stolen from them. We can't get that back. Teachers fought against this program during initial piloting. They were bribed by Cy Swan and ultimately ignored by Dr. Navarro. Three of my daughters lost their right to fundamental, foundational math. The list of problems and lack of leadership created by Dr. Navarro cannot be rewarded anymore. Board and community members, I stand before you tonight not because I have an opinion, but because I have the facts. I have seen enough, and we have made a decision, to move our four daughters out of the district. We are joining the more than 800,000 kids who are leaving. I can only imagine their reasons. Is it because 50% of them are failing? Board, this must concern you, the exodus results in new teachers losing their jobs. Our teachers are the greatest, most valuable asset. Fred, you do not deserve the right to lead them and direct the education of our children. We will never stop doing what's best for all our students. Sadly, our girls will no longer attend the district.
Thank you.
With such a horrible leader, Fred Navarro, time to move on. Board members, you know what to do.
Mr. Roberts.
The community and beloved teachers need more.
Thank you. Ann Parsick? Ann Parsick? Hope, there you are. And then Thomas Courtney, you're on deck.
Hi, I'm Ann Parsick, and I'm, I live in Corona del Mar. I have two kids in the district. And I've got two points I wanted to comment on. First of all, I also want to encourage you not to renew Dr. Navarro's contract. I, I understand that mistakes can be made. Everyone makes mistakes. Supervisors, superintendents make mistakes. But real, true leaders own them and try to improve them, and ask for input on trying to improve them, and I just don't see that here. I'm kind of new to this whole going to the school board thing, so, but I was kind of thrown into it by the whole accelerated math debacle last year. I feel like it was sprung on us last minute, you know, right before school break started. And we were able to whip up, as you recall, you know, parents to come and express their dismay. And I, you know, later I felt, oh my gosh, I feel swindled, like I feel like this was done on purpose, right before the school break started, so that we couldn't say anything about it. And luckily, we were able to bring it back, and my son is doing just fine. But there's also, it seems like there's debacle after debacle after debacle, and, and there's no ownership being taken. Like someone else just mentioned, I'm still working with my kids, I'm filling in the Like someone else just mentioned, I'm still working with my kids on filling in the math gaps that they have from having had Swan Math for these four or five terrible math years, and it just seems like nothing was done to try to remedy the problem. So, anyway, I don't, I'm not alone in this. I've got friends who I didn't even know about the numbers. I had no idea that the numbers were this big of students leaving the district. But I can just tell you from my own personal circle in my neighborhood, just, I'm crushed because just yesterday, a good friend across the green belt just told me she's pulling her three kids out of the district and putting them in St. Mary's. I felt like I was the one, you know, public school proponent going, no, come back, come back, you know, and I, but I can't, what can I do? I mean, I can't defend it anymore, to the point where we're considering it ourselves, and I really don't want to. I went to public school, my husband went to public school. I love public school, but it's, I feel like I'm being forced out, and so are my neighbors and friends. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, I also would like to echo the comment, please bring public comment to the beginning. I'm not paying a babysitter, but I'm going to come home to total chaos, and it'll probably be another three hours before I can go to bed. And I, you know, I refuse to believe that you guys did this on purpose so that people couldn't comment. I just, I'm not cynical enough to believe it. No one can come. I had a lot of people who I mentioned this to who are interested in coming that said, I can't, I can't go to that. I can't stay that long. So, if you really, truly want to hear from the public, if you really, truly want to be a public organization to hear the public, we need to be able to talk to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Nguyen, you're next.
My name's Thomas Courtney. I live in Corona Del Mar. Mrs. Metoyer was our principal for many years. It's nice to see you. The best and worst moment of tonight, you saw it, was when the representative of the teachers spoke and Dr. Navarro gave bad excuses, and then Mrs. Metoyer said the right thing, which was, we want to work with you. It was the message that a leader would say, and she was the leader, and I commend you for that. You know, during every speech that's been given tonight, we've had bus drivers, we've had teachers, we've had parents, Mr. Navarro hasn't looked at anybody. All of you have looked at everybody, and I can only think that he's either embarrassed or he knows that he's wrong. The problem is that he's not performing his job befitting his station. He makes over $400,000 a year, basically what the President of the United States makes. If you're going to take a salary like that, it's not enough to push papers for your term and maintain the status quo. It's not even enough to make small incremental changes. You must be a compassionate and effective leader and act as a liaison with the community. And Superintendent Navarro's performance has not even come close to that level. His conduct at any of the meetings of the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Trustees demonstrates considerable disdain for the concerns of the constituents, and it's not clear that he's interested in any way in what the community thinks on issues concerning the school district. He has not made himself available nor eager to engage with the community. We could discuss the lawsuit that was filed against him as a bad leader. We could discuss his lack of action to improve the schools. We could discuss any number of things, but it's enough for me to say that he doesn't display an interest in engaging with the families of the school district, and for the amount that we're paying for his opulent salary, we deserve better.
Did she leave? Ruth Sanchez Kobayashi? I know.
I hope I can speak. I'm tired. Good evening. My name is Ruth Sanchez Kobayashi, and I'm now a community member and the parent of two daughters that are recent graduates of our district. One is a fairly high-performing academic student, and the other one is smart in different, less academic ways. And I'd like to affirm what I heard about some of the additions to the CTE program. My daughter's, younger daughter's major in college can specifically be attributed to Mr. Zbarth's media and photography class. It changed her life from feeling like in a high-performing high school that she didn't take AP classes, that she was less than, to that she's now got a career, and she will be a video editor for ESPN. Challenge success has shown us at Corona Del Mar that our district is committed to helping our school create a healthier and well-balanced environment for all of our students, focusing on the whole student and helping them to thrive. We've learned a lot about the downside of the hyper-focus on academic prestige. We've seen a lot of things in the news to affirm how that can get out of whack. I'm grateful for the commitment from this board and this superintendent, who I appreciate being treated with respect for his position, to provide an environment where all students can reach their full potential. And while I've heard things here tonight that are upsetting and disappointing, I'd urge you that wherever there may be areas to be improved, to do it. No organization, no school, no government, no family is perfect. There are thousands of parents in this district who are not here tonight. They're really happy with their schools. They're really happy with their principals who were hired by the people in leadership. That woman in purple over there is one of the most amazing people I have ever seen in terms of executive-level people. These people at this table are really high-functioning, amazing people. I come from a business background. I've been, I've hired and fired heads of schools at private schools. It's this big compared to the job that you do, but I've seen good, really great educational leadership in this room, including every single member at this desk, and I'm really disappointed with the way I've seen one of the members at this desk being treated tonight. It does not represent the way most of the people in our district feel, and I'm sorry that not everybody's happy. I want their issues to be addressed, but it does not represent most parents in this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, that's the last card. Board member reports. Let's start with...
I think it's Karen's turn.
I think it's Mrs. Yelsey's turn, too.
My turn. Well, due to the late hour, I won't take a long time, but just as a reflection of some of the things I know happened, there's been a lot going on at the end-of-the-year activities, and so I know we've all been into lots of things. But one I just wanted to mention, I was at the Corona Del Mar Senior Awards Night last night, and there, I counted on the page of award recipients, but it was 228 students who were recognized for academic achievement. Now, this is not academic achievement that's been dumbed down, because these people were AP scholars, AP scholars with honors, AP scholars... Oops. Oh, I'm sorry. These people were AP scholars, AP scholars with honors, AP scholars with distinction, which isn't reflective of just what we do in our district. This is a standardized test that's given to them. So, all of these students have passed, at a minimum, gotten a three on three or more AP tests, and an AP scholar with distinction is passing five or more AP tests. So, I would say in terms of academics, where people have questioned how we're preparing kids, or we don't offer accelerated programs, that type of thing, that we are doing a great job in our district, just from this one year, but it happens every year. And other than that, Special Olympics was fabulous. I really appreciate all the effort, the work that the district puts into it. Concerts and programs at the end of the year have been great, so that's it. It's late.
Where are we going? Mrs. Black?
You.
Me? Okay.
Ms. Black.
Ditto to what Karen said, but I do have to confess that the Special Olympics was really fun, and what a production and amazing event that they did. Mrs. Yelsey and I and Snow, we couldn't help but playing with the balls. We had to go in and retrieve them, but it was really great. And then also, I was very impressed at Corona Del Mar and also at Enson's seventh and eighth grade awards. But at Corona Del Mar, they had, they did an amazing job. It was all run by students, and the teachers were celebrated and featured as well, and pretty impressive. So, kudos to them. And Enson's Character Award, and they had a great speaker who stepped in at the last minute who did a good job, and always supported, you know, by our city as well, you know, with our police chief, our police lieutenant, I can't remember. And I'm, you know, just really, really impressed with all this stuff, and the music, it's just crazy, you know, so great. We're so talented, and I wish the whole community could see that. So, I think, Dr. Navarro, I think we need to invest in YouTube and have our own privately private channel. I was waiting for the hand to go up. She's going, but because it is, I really feel that, you know, the community doesn't get to see, you know, what's going on. But I was going to say no report because it's kind of disheartening when you do see all the positive things day after day, every day, and also, you know, our hard-working teachers who were very challenged. And Swan Math for us was remarkable for this district because we realized over 60 percent of our teachers were really struggling teaching higher-level math, and they needed the support. And so, it was just, you know, I think, a real eye-opener for us that we had to stop what we're doing, come back, and really focus on the teacher, you know, and the support. And so, I appreciate that, you know, it was definitely not, and that's just my opinion, you know, because talking to teachers, they were pretty overwhelmed by the new standards. And although others countries have been teaching them since day one, and the United States is 45th, California is lower than that in the country, we're the lowest in the world when it comes to high-level math, up until we started looking at, and then Swan isn't it. It was, I can't think of it now. Singapore. Singapore is number one, and all the different countries, and they've been teaching, and I got to go to Germany with my exchange students, and I got to go into teachers' classrooms, and they've been teaching conceptual math in, you know, pre-K and kindergarten. Also, their parents were really shocked that I even, you know, the teachers were shocked that I even wanted to go into their classroom because parents don't go into their classrooms. They leave it up to the school, so I appreciated, you know, the fact that we got great feedback from the teachers, from our teachers, that they needed our help for learning, you know, and teaching and learning, you know, the high level, and now we have our new science standard. So, I'm really proud of our teachers because they have worked really hard in the last three to four years. It's just been remarkable to me, remarkable, and they help each other. Principals are in there every day, and now we have a mechanism that drills down, that shows every child in our district and where they're at in real time to help support those teachers. So, I, for one, can say that I feel I'm, you know, pretty excited about what's going on, you know, so. And I wish I was taking class again because it wouldn't have taken me so long to figure out math. But anyways, thanks for letting me pontificate. Mrs. Fleury?
A couple of things. We had our very first graduation, oh, two weeks ago?
Yep.
At early college high schools, their 10th graduation.
10 years ago.
Of the students that were there who graduated, I think there was over 46. Every single one of those students, except for one, who's going into the military, are going to college. Every single one, with one exception in military. That is a remarkable feat for that school, that every, every child. And we're not talking about just a two-year college. We're talking about Berkeley. We're talking about Northwestern. We're talking about UCI. We're talking about a whole host of students, and it's a Title I school to boot. And we're talking about a student at that school who earned an Angel Scholars, and we are one of the few districts that got three of those.
Three.
Three, and those are full-ride, $20,000 a year for four-year scholarships, and we have three of them, one from early college and...
Two from Newport Harbor.
And two from Newport Harbor. One was one of our student board members.
Yes.
So, that's one, and I'm just so thrilled to see that school really come into its own. It's just been amazing watching that. It's also an avid distinguished school. They are now considered a demonstration site. A couple of other things. One is, as most of you know on this board and probably some of you at the district, my son, I have several, I have five children, but we're struggling with one of my kids. Several of them have been struggling with addiction issues and significant addiction issues for a number of years. And I happen to go visit one of them who's been, is in treatment right now. And I came across an alarming statistic, which is seven people die every 30 minutes every day of an overdose of whatever, whether it be drugs or alcohol. Every, seven people die. That's pretty scary. And I know that when we're dealing, and we've been dealing with lots of issues as it relates to social-emotional issues, and our district has been taking a hard look at that, but when we see in our closed sessions students that we have to expel for multiple, multiple issues of drugs and alcohol, I would really like us to start focusing on hiring one of our social workers or one of the individuals that we have in the special ed department that's helping our students who is an expert on addiction, whether it be a social worker, a psychologist, I don't care, but I believe that we need to start truly looking at this issue, especially with the marijuana issues, the Jules. It only starts with one, can start with one cigarette, it can start with a prescription drug that a student will have, and we have kids that are over-medicating themselves to feel good about themselves. So, I would really like us to take a look at that in terms of within the special ed. I'll get off my soapbox. And finally, I would like some information, and this is probably for George. Tableau, which is the program that we've been touting about how we put everything in, has just been bought for $15 billion by Salesforce.com. And Salesforce.com, for those of you who don't know, it's really a program for customer service and, you know, reaching out to get customers, so I'm a little concerned about that impact on Tableau and what does, what does that mean to us in the not-for-profit world, so to speak, and that. So, I would really like to take a look at that. And finally, Dr. Navarro, when do you want us to respond to, you sent us the district priorities?
Mm-hmm.
So, are we, are you scheduling that?
For the 25th.
For the 25th?
Yes, I believe.
So, we will have a conversation? Are you still open for suggestions? I know I've...
You can give me suggestions anytime.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's pretty open. It always has been.
Okay, that's what I figured, but I wanted to, I just wanted to make sure.
Just know, we're just finishing working on the one G E class.
Yeah, I know. Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, I forgot one. Go ahead. I forgot one.
No, no.
It's an important one because it was brought up. Dr. Navarro has now indicated that he has finished his self-evaluation, and so my understanding is now I will be sending out the evaluation document, the Survey Monkey. So, as soon as Dr. Navarro gets that to us...
Isn't that a closed session item?
Uh-huh. No, it's not. It's not, we're not talking about...
It's just information.
With this process. And so, Dr. Navarro will be getting to me by Monday of this, of next week.
Can you give us some time between us getting the document before you send out a Survey Monkey so we can read it?
Oh, I will send you out the Survey Monkey, but you don't have, you'll have at least two weeks, two and a half weeks, three weeks to use that. No, the, Dr. Navarro will send out his self-evaluation on Monday. I'll probably send out the, just the Survey Monkey because you're going to need some processing time and the date... And the, and the date due for the actual return of the evaluation portion won't begin until, let's, let's make it July 1st. When's our next board meeting? The 26th?
July 1st is in two weeks.
Then what's, what's the next one?
July 16th.
July 16th. So we'll make it for the week, the Friday before that.
His contract is up June 30th. I would like for us to...
Pardon me?
The contract is up June 30th. I would like for, yes, it is. I would like for us to have a conversation about that first.
It's not up.
That's a closed session discussion.
It's not up. If you look, the contract's not up.
But we'll...
Got another year.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I'm just talking about process of that.
We need to get information, then.
My turn. If you're in the lobby, you can see the fabulous grand prize winners and prize winners of the scene, of the secondary art show. It's fabulous, because they are judged by independent judges, so that's pretty cool and an excellent thing for our students. And they're pretty talented. I was able to attend, my first of two, attending formal debates by the AP Rhetoric Class at Costa Mesa High School. I've done a lot of musical stuff. I've done a lot of athletic stuff, but I love going to the academic classes. And if you ever want to feel comfortable about where our future is going, and what kind of students we're having, go to a debate class, because they are fabulous. They reference, they speak clearly, they dress appropriately. It was fabulous. I was also able, I attended with Mrs. Yelsey, the AP Environmental Poster Contest, which is basically the summary of the data that they collected, which is real scientific data out in the field. And if you're feeling so inclined, they could use some support to make sure they can do it next year, because the participation in the, and I can't remember what it's, the group that works with them, it's ICE, but it's not ICE.
ICRE.
ICRE. It stands for something, but ends in environmental.
And she means financial support.
They need financial support. So I'm out there, I'm out there working on it, so anybody else that can, that would be great. And then on Saturday, I attended the Secondary Robotics Contest, which was, has been morphing for the last two or three years. The elementary, I was assured that the elementary schools still have their own robotics contests and competitions, but it's within their zone and within their own elementary schools, which freed it up for the high schools. And oh, my gosh, these robots are scary good, what they're doing. And then to find out that we're just scratching the surface, so that's very, very exciting. And I had one question. Mr. Drake, you talked to us about that we only had one finding on our federal monitoring thing, and along with the commendations. I'd love to hear the commendations, if we had, because usually when we get that kind of a report, there's good news, and then there's work on it. Not tonight, no, I just, I want to hear the good news.
I think I can sum it up.
Good.
There were no findings, other than that one.
Okay, and they don't give you, like, perks, and you're wonderful, they just say, it's the feds.
Yes, I'll have to get back to that.
I like good news, too. Alrighty. Mrs. Snow.
It's been a busy few weeks, I think we all agree. We've been to a lot of awards, and a lot of clapping, and smiles, and...
Smile season.
I did go, I think it was last night, to the SOI 2019 Senior Scholars Awards. They, this year, have outdone themselves. They gave out 39 scholarships.
Wow.
$190,000. So that, that's amazing. And I was also impressed with OCC has a foundation, and they, Mayor Capellini, you know, she's always working it. And she got them to donate, this is a little complicated, but those students that are part of the, what do they call it, the, what do they call it? The Pirate Promise Grant, where they go to school for two years. And their free tuition, they will be getting $1,000 from the foundation for books, as well as SOI gives them $1,000 for expenses. And then if they were accepted into a four-year, and they chose to stay with the two-year and transfer over, they hold their scholarship. They don't penalize them for, because they like to give scholarships, if you're going to a four-year school, and you're, you know. And so they told, it was, it's amazing. They're just doing great work, and they have some really great donors. Also, I know several of you went to the lyceum. I have to plug Estancia High School, their lyceum program. And we actually retreated to some oral presentations by their freshmen on AP Human Geography. I think the theme was, what, what your space...
Something local.
Space, place.
Place.
Space, place. And, and then we...
We have some new restaurants to try out.
Yeah, they're, yeah, yeah. And so that was really interesting, in addition to all the other things. So it was a great, it's been a fun, busy time.
Ms. Anderson.
I wanted to start addressing some things that I heard tonight. I agree and echo, I would like to hear employee organizations and DWA have a seat at the table. They represent a lot of parents and staff, so I would like to have their voice heard and to be able to give informal reports. I also believe that we need to have childcare at our board meetings. We have childcare at DWA, which is amazing, and allows parents to come. We need childcare. We serve families. So, and continuation of that, I agree that we need to move public comment back to the beginning. 10:30 is far too late for young families, and that, we serve families. We need to hear community voices. It's extremely important. I would like to have next year, study sessions for both the LCAP and the budget, where the community can be involved, open to the public, engaging all major stakeholders. Well, we haven't done it since I've been on the board. I would like to see that.
Not yet.
I have never, I've never been, right. So I haven't seen it. I would like to see that for next year. It didn't happen this year. And so for events, I went to the Estancia Awards Night. It was amazing. There were so many students that were there, and it was a joy to see several that I knew. Open House, I went to open houses at Pomona, Wilson, Ray, and Victoria. Several of mine were all on the same night. I would love to see them spread out a bit more, maybe starting in May. It's really important to me to be involved in the school communities that I serve, and to not be able to go to one or two of them, because they were double-booked, was difficult. I went to the Wilson Family Night last Friday. It was amazing. I'm going to the Victoria Spring Festival this Friday and volunteering. And then Thursday night is the last DWA meeting of the year, and it will be a potluck celebration to celebrate everything that happened this year. That's all.
Yay.
I'm going to give a really short report, and then give my ledge report in two minutes. So I went to the Newport L. Open House, and it was really cool, because I could see that with the elementary zone data chats, just how great the writing has gotten across the board at the third grade level. I was really impressed. Like, this was really excellent writing with the topic sentence, and like, the structure was, was far improved over what I had seen. I also was really encouraged by the discussions we had on focusing on social-emotional, and keeping that up, and really putting that as part of something we recognize as an issue, and keeping that at the forefront of our pathways. And then additionally, for legislative, I jumped the gun on 1505. It is not passed Assembly, but it's in the Senate right now, and the Ed Committee, first reading there. So these are the charter schools ones. And then 1506 is in its third reading in Assembly. 1507 is in the Senate, which is great. And then the 428, which I think that's the one you...
Yeah.
Yeah, the special ed. So that one is in Senate Education Committee, so that's a good, everything's moving forward with amendments that are pretty positive. And I'll only have one more big ledge report probably next week, because then the, then they're in recess.
Coming down, it's coming down the wire.
Yep.
Thank you. Mrs. Flora Croft.
Yeah, and I, before I forget, I just want to correct something for Britt, Dr. Dowdy here. I'm just talking about the Thought Exchange. They saw 155 staff members participated, with 132 individual thoughts, and assigned 29, 2,979 ratings to the thoughts of others. You can view their thoughts on, the highest was value all students. Students may be relieved to know that their value isn't always based on their academic or social success. That was a conversation about some staff. Climate of confidence, kindness is reduce, reduce anxiety and social pressure. So there were, there were a number, 155 staff members, teachers participated, secondary teachers participated, Dr. Dowdy. And it's all here, online. And you can just go to the, it's actually, you click it on, it says Staff Conversations About Addressing School-Related Teenagers Stress. And it's on...
Is that on our website?
It's on our website, on the Thought Exchange. So I just wanted to make a point that we did engage the teachers.
But I hear your point, though, too. I don't want to just go off thinking, I do, I would like to have some kind of feedback from them.
Well, I believe that the teachers, the question itself was helped, was developed by, we got, who developed, Thought Exchange. Did you, did you develop the question? Just you?
No.
With the help of, just...
The assistance of...
The cabinet.
Of Thought Exchange.
Thought Exchange.
Thought Exchange does the analysis.
So with the direction of Dr. Navarro, with this topic, Sarah Jocaman and I met with Thought Exchange to get input on how to write a good, open-ended question. And so that was actually a process that probably took about two weeks to get the question worded just right. And to your point, this was not a collaborative process. I didn't pull together a committee. I didn't seek input from teachers. This was a question that really came from the board and Dr. Navarro for us to seek input.
And let's be clear on the question. It was, what are some impactful contributors and ways we could work to reduce school-related stress for teenagers? That was the question. So, and we had 945. So I'm going to report on ROP. We had a special board meeting tonight. Our next board meeting is June 19th. We are still working on a bridge agreement. As you know, I've been talking about the funding issue, the funding, and looking at a different way of funding the model. The superintendents have been working collaboratively, all five of the districts. We're very appreciative of that. So it looks like there will be a significant, and when I mean significant, over $1.8 million will be, we're going back to the, the schools, and we will be reducing our reserve down to less than, about $500,000, which is a little scary for us, because we can drop, you know, and we're looking at sending all the contracted teachers that, that are employed into CTE, are going back to, the district will assume. Currently, we have, you have, we have contracted teachers, the district has contracted teachers. They teach an ROP class. That money flows back to, to the district. It's back and forth. So now you, our district will, our...
Jeff, not my...
No, I'm looking at CTE. Our, our teachers will, those teachers that are teaching CTE classes will be contracted, and they will be teaching our CTE, but they will be not ROP classes. They will all be ROP, our teacher, CTE teachers. So that's going to be a little bit of a different method of, yeah, paradigm, a big paradigm shift. And then our teachers, that are ROP teachers, will only teach ROP classes, the ROP teachers. So it'll be a different, it'll be a different shift.
That's crazy.
So we're looking at a bridge agreement, and then a long-term.
Mrs. Yelsey.
Yes, real quickly, we had the last meeting of the Mental Health Task Force. Ms. Anderson and I are the reps on that, but this meeting, Mrs. Snow and Mrs. Barto came as well. And Dr. DiAgostino gave an overview of, a review of what's happened this year, and just a couple of interesting things. The data shows that our substance abuse has remained steady, but vaping has gone up 300%.
Vaping is just...
So that's the biggest issue that, that we've been dealing with.
Dragging in the room.
And once again, we had mentioned before Title IV funds, which address social-emotional issues. And I know Student Services and Special Ed have been working on how we'll use that money, which I think is fabulous. I wish there was more. And then he mentioned that their Orange County Healthcare Agency has, there's like a pot of $5 million that you can apply for grants. Anyhow, Angela and Sarah mentioned this, and I said, well, why haven't we gotten any of those? And I'm, I don't think anybody's sure, but maybe we could look into that, to see if we could possibly get some of that money. One thing that I thought was really unique about this committee is Newport Harbor ASB has a wellness commissioner on their staff. They come, they came to all our mental...
As part of their ASB.
Yes. They came to all our mental health meetings, task force meetings. So somehow, maybe Kirk, you can talk to the ASB. I think it would be great for all of the ASBs to have someone who could represent, these are students, who could represent on this task force in the future.
That's a great idea.
Great idea.
And front-load them, because the three at my table didn't want to share. They were very nervous. So if someone can also work with them in sharing their thoughts, because it was really valuable.
Well, and they do sometimes, because they'll share if you ask them. But if they had more students there, I think that would be...
We have to coax them, you know, that's what I learned.
I think that would be great. Anyhow, it's, it's a really good task force, and the meeting's already set up for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I ask for adjournment, I just wanted to say one. Mrs. Leece, thanks for catching the typo. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Meeting, meeting's adjourned.